All right, and now we will go right into calling to order the Lake Havasu City regular meeting on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Public participation in this meeting is in person, or you can watch and listen to the meeting live via Channel 4, or you could also go to LHCaz.gov/TV. We are accepting comments from members of the public. Written comment can be submitted for call to the public or public hearing items by emailing We will now have the invocation from Suzanne Waldron from Mount Olive Lutheran Church.
May I ask you to walk over to make these important decisions for our city, which is so precious to us all? We ask you to watch over these citizens. We ask you to watch over our police, our workforce department, our fire department, our nurses. We pray for the people that have died in your struggle, in your pain. We know that you are the quid pro quo of even watching over us. Joshua told us that if I not carry you with this storm of good courage, we not frightened, neither do you disdain, for the Lord your God is with you wherever you go. We thank you for the opportunity to come together and work for our community, which is probably the best one in the whole world, as far as that concern, and to let on a lesser note, I want to maybe with a little thought. If God brings you to it, he will bring you through it. Happy moments praiseful, difficult moments, sweet moments, quiet moments, worshipful, painful moments, stressful, every moment thankful. And thank you for council members, and we thank you for the mayor, and citizens, and the police, and the fire department, who treat us all safe and good, and figure we may always be able to come across for all.
Thank you Suzanne. And we'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by the veterans of foreign wars, the VFW Post 9401, Buzz Bancroft.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome Buzz. Thank you for being here. If you could share a little bit about your organization, the VFW.
Your honor, the VFW was formed in 1913, and Congress gave us our national charter so that we could operate nationally. Our mission is to honor the dead by helping the living, and today we keep saying it's veterans helping veterans. We provide a voice for veterans at the congressional level. We assist needy veterans and their families and develop friendships among members and honor deceased veterans and support troops overseas. Our membership is open to men and women either on active duty or honorably discharged who have fought in foreign military campaign, or was in a theater of operations in direct support of combat operations. That's our difference between us and the American Legion. Any honorably discharged veteran can join the American Legion, but you must have been in combat or in direct support in order to be a member of the VFW. Currently, there are 2.2 million members in the VFW and 8,100 posts worldwide. Our local post currently has over 760 members. A lot of those are winter visitors. We have an auxiliary that's made up of spouses and relatives of veterans, and they have the same goals as the VFW. The VFW and the auxiliary donate millions of hours of their time in community service, and from working in blood drives to coordinating scholarships and locally supporting veterans. Locally, what our VFW post does is we have the Buddy Poppy program. You've seen us out distributing the Buddy Poppies. Contrary to common belief, we do not sell those. The post buys them from the national level, and we give those away free. If somebody should decide to donate some money to us, that's great. It stays locally in our post to help local veterans and our relief fund. We have scholarships. One of them is for recently discharged veterans, so they can continue their education upon separation from the military. We have one scholarship that's open to seniors, high school seniors. The state first place prize is $5,000 college scholarship, and if they progress on up to the national level, if they should win that scholarship, they will get a $30,000 college scholarship. And we start each level that they go through, excuse me, each level they go through, they will also get a scholarship from the post, the district, and so forth. We also have a scholarship for students in grades 6 to 8. The state first place winner gets $500, and the national first place winner gets $5,000 so they can bank that for their future college uses. And the auxiliary also has a scholarship that they can, along the same lines as we do, for students. We have a veterans thrift store here locally, and we support that wholeheartedly. We will make donations of used items to them for resale to veterans in the area. We provide gas, food, and lodging vouchers to veterans in need. It's a one-time basis only. We provide limited transportation here within the city for those who might not have their own means of transportation, so we'll get them to their appointments or whatever else they need to get to. We support and participate in the administration of Judge Colali's Veterans Treatment Court. Some of the mentors for the court are members of the local post, and the coordinator for that post is, or for the mentors here is also one of our members. I think you might have run into Joan McDermott. We are a member of the Veterans Resource Team. What that is, is a coalition of civic, veteran, and fraternal organizations who provide assistance to Lake Havasu City citizens as well as veterans. We point out to the veterans what services are available locally for treatment or any other kind of services that they may need. And we last, we provide limited medical equipment to veterans on a short-term basis, crutches, canes, wheelchairs. We have a couple of electric wheelchairs that we can loan them. And I think one of the most important things that we do is we put on the Veterans Day Parade, which unfortunately we won't be able to have this year due to the COVID-19, but we will have a small parade hopefully of seven or eight cars showing the flag. And unfortunately, the public will not be invited to our little presentation down at Wheeler Park, but just so that we can still honor our veterans, we'll be having that. But that's one of our biggest annual functions that we do. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you Buzz, and thank you for all you do for veterans in our community. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is item four, roll call. Ms. Williams, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmembers Jenny Koch, here. Gordon Grove, here. Michelle Lynn, here. Donna McCoy, here. Vice Mayor Dana Lane, here. Mayor Kalshi, here. Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is call to the public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. You'll have three minutes. There is a light indicator box near Ms. Williams. Green means you have your three minutes. Yellow means one minute's remaining, and red means that the three minutes is up. If you are here for a particular item that's on the public hearings, we do ask that you wait till that time because we can have a two-way conversation back and forth. Otherwise, during the call to the public, we can only listen to your comments and not provide any feedback. You do not have to sign up for a call to the public, but we do have one that did, so we'll start there. But before we do, for those in the room and also viewing at home, during the COVID-19 pandemic, we're meeting our council and our citizens where they're at. So we do have in-person attendance in the council chambers. We do ask that you wear a face covering or a mask when you're doing that, and we've modified the dais here. So council members do have acrylic dividers so that we can take off the face covering, and you can see as we're speaking. We've moved the podium to the center of the room so that if you're speaking, you can also remove it, your face covering, if you're comfortable, and people still have the six feet of separation. And then council members that feel comfortable or need to, they can zoom in, and we do have Councilmember McCoy doing that with us this evening. And then also staff and department directors zoom in to help limit the number of people in the room so we can have more citizens in the room. So those are some of the steps that we're taking. Now, in order to make all that happen, there's a lot of moving parts. I would like to thank Jerry Bracchamani and Steve Blake in the back control room for all the work they're doing to zoom us in and zoom us out to make sure everybody can be heard and seen for the future. So thank you so much for all the work that you do. Now, to the call to the public, I would like to introduce and welcome Councilmember-elect Moses. Welcome this evening, and also Councilmember-elect Campbell, welcome here this evening. The first person to speak is Lisa Krueger with the Chamber of Commerce. Ms. Krueger, are you in the room?
Good evening, Mayor Sheehy and councilmembers. It's kind of hard to hear out there, so did you say I could take this off while I talk?
Yes, we have it positioned properly.
Yeah. All right, so I'm here again this evening to introduce some new members of the Chamber of Commerce that have taken some time out of their busy day to join us. The reason that I like to introduce new Chamber of Commerce members to you is so that we're all reminded of kind of the wheels that make the bus go in our community as far as the economic driver. So this evening, we have Cardinale Family Concession, and that is Tony Cardinale and Tammy Verdone, right over here. We also have Havasu Mobile Screen and Shade, and that's Todd and Teresa Davidson, who are also over there. And Sharon was going to join us from Lady Dyes, who has recently just joined the chamber. And Sharon, I don't think you're here. Wave if you are. So again, thank you for allowing us to take this opportunity, and I hope you have a shorter meeting.
Thank you very much, Lisa, and welcome to the business community. We appreciate it. All right, would anyone else like to address the city council during the call to the public? Again, you don't have to sign up to do so, and during the COVID-19 era, we are accepting public comment through email at cityclerk@LHCaz.gov, and we do have one. Ms. Williams, if you would like to read that into the record.
Yes, thank you, mayor. We did receive one written public comment on today, Tuesday, the 25th, 2020, with the subject line of Transportation Plan Hearing 825, 2020. Unless I have missed something in the newspaper on this issue, nothing is mentioned about having the return of a commercial airline to Lake Havasu City. For those that were here prior to the commercial airlines leaving LHC, which rumor has it, was created when no one resubmitted the essential air service grant, this needs to be discussed at today's meeting. I know people that have moved from LHC because of the requirement to travel to Phoenix or Las Vegas to fly or pick up guests. This is a black eye for the city. Only good can become of the return of air service to the city. I also know of individuals and corporations that would not relocate to LHC due to non-availability of airline service. Please consider this during today's LHC council meeting. Thank you for your time and consideration. Teri Meyer, LHC.
Thank you. Before we close the public hearing, would anyone else like to address the city council at this time? We'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Item six is the consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion? Seeing none, entertain a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember McCoy, if you'd like to give your verbal vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. We'll start with item 7.1, which is announce vacancies on the Lake Havasu City boards, committees, and commissions. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, mayor and city council. There are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City boards, committees, and commissions. The following is the listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one alternate pilot member. Board of Adjustment, four regular members, and three alternate members. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov.
Thank you. And also at this time, Ms. Williams, if you would like to make a presentation to Councilmember-elect Campbell? And I have a microphone here if you wanted.
Yep, either way.
Either way. Yeah, wherever you're comfortable.
On August 17th, last week, the council did adopt a resolution declaring the primary election result of August 4th official, and declaring those candidates nominated, or declaring the candidates that were directly elected at the primary election. Those candidates were Cameron Moses, David Lane, and Nancy Campbell. Nancy Campbell was not here for that meeting, so she is here tonight, and we are here to give her her certificate of election for the primary election.
Excellent. So Councilmember-elect Campbell, if you'd like to make your way up to the podium. And Ms. Williams, I'll present the certificate for you.
Welcome.
Yes. Congratulations. Item 7.2 is the city manager's report. Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to start this evening's report with the presentation of some proclamations that you made in the last few weeks, Mayor Sheehy. You proclaimed August 14th as Jack Clifford Dillon Day in Lake Havasu City on August 14th, honoring his 96th birthday and unwavering dedication and service to our country. His story includes serving during World War II, during the Korean War, and the Vietnam War, before retiring as a major following 28 years of service in the Army Air Corps. Most notably, at the very young age of 20, Jack flew as a co-pilot in a B-29 bomber during World War II in the infamous air raid and atomic bombing mission of Hiroshima and Nagasaki. And on the day the Emperor of Japan surrendered, August 14th, 1945, Jack celebrated his 21st birthday. On August 15th, Mayor Sheehy proclaimed National Farmers Market Week and presented the proclamation to a group of volunteers at the CAZ, or Kitchen Art Workspace Building, that houses our local farmer's market. The Lake Havasu Farmer's Market, established in July of 2019, emphasizes the importance of shopping local, offering interactive learning opportunities, and highlights local produce, meats, eggs, dairy products, jewelry, soap, clothing, and artists, chefs, musicians, educators, and businesses throughout our lower Colorado River. Lieutenant Joe Harold is retiring in September with 20 years of service with Lake Havasu City and 10 years of service with Gilroy PD and Morgan Hill PD. Joe served in both patrol and as a detective, and heads up the department's negotiation team. Joe was promoted to lieutenant seven years ago and has served with distinction. Joe was quoted as saying, "I consider it a privilege to have served the Lake Havasu City community for the past 20 years. The community's support of their police officers is just one of the many reasons why our city is such a great place to live and work. I want to thank Chief Dan Doyle for his support and the opportunities I was provided at the police department. It has been my privilege to be a part of a command staff where I was afforded an opportunity to make an impact on the department's operations and the well-being of our community." Thank you. Lieutenant Harold, thank you for your service, and thank you for everything you did for Lake Havasu City. Just very recently, the fire department has took delivery of 92 self-containing breathing apparatuses, or CBAs. Back in May, council, you approved the purchase of 61 SCBA's through an assistance to firefighters' grant in the amount of $4,000, or excuse me, $420,000, with city managing funds of 10%. Since the AFG did not fully fund the request, amount of the SCBA equipment that the city needed, the city council approved the usage of additional funds in the amount of $210,000 in city funds to complete the upgrade, to make us whole. At that point, that allows us to have all CBAs for all of our firefighting experts. This purchase is a 15-year investment for the city, and the equipment is an essential tool by our firefighters. A new SCBA meets all current applicable requirements and have all the technical and mechanical advancements available to ensure optimal protection while improving the safety of our firefighters. All are scheduled to be in service on or about October 1st. Members of the public are invited to subscribe to many outlets of information we provide on city programs, services, issues, and projects. Subscriptions include the mayor's newsletter, news and updates, meetings and events, parks and recreation updates, veteran court newsletter, and updates on bids and requests for proposals submitted by the city. To register, please visit our website at LHCaz.gov/subscribe. The next virtual coffee with the mayor and city manager is scheduled for Friday, September 4th at 8:30. Please visit the city's Facebook page at LHCaz.gov on Facebook and watch and interact with us live. And finally, our community continues to work hard to slow the spread of the virus in our area. We've seen a significant decrease in positive cases in Lake Havasu City and throughout the county, many thanks to all the efforts throughout our community in helping to slow the spread. Last weekend, North Country organized a free COVID-19 testing event at the Aquatic Center. About 50 people registered for the event, and we had 35 people that showed up and were tested. There was another event coming up in the upcoming weeks. The next event is scheduled for September 13th and 14th. For information on dates, please contact the Mojave County Department of Public Health at 928-753-0748, or check out the city's website and Facebook page for more details as well. According to the Arizona Department of Health Services webpage, our positivity rate for the county as of the week of August 2nd is now 11.5%, which is up from 10.7% from the preceding two weeks. According to Governor Ducey's directive, the positivity rate needs to fall below 10% for a two-week period, and for the other stats to continue to fall for gyms, theaters, water parks, bars, and some restaurants to open at reduced capacity. As of now, as a county, we are still categorized in the substantial transmission phase. For more information, please visit azdhs.gov for those details. And the information you see here on the screen shows the updated format that is now distributed by the Mojave County Department of Public Health. There's now more detailed breakdown of the areas in the region where the cases are reported, breakdown of cases and deaths by age group, and a long-term look at cases and deaths to help provide us with an understanding of trends and to better understand the COVID-19 and its impacts. Mayor and council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. Are there any questions from the council? All right, we'll move on to item eight, which is our public hearings. We'll start with item 8.1, which is discussion and possible action, if necessary, to comply with Arizona Open Meeting Law following the executive session regarding the evaluation of the city manager. I'll read a statement. The council did meet in an executive session this afternoon. Again, I apologize for our delay of this meeting due to that, to discuss the evaluation of the city manager. This council values and demands integrity, and it's a top priority of this council. The council will take further steps to review and evaluate the performance of the city manager. There is no need for a motion at this time, but we will take the next steps necessary to ensure our values as a community are met in the leadership of our city. Is there any comments of the council before I open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none in person, and we did not receive any written comments at cityclerk@LHCaz.gov, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion from council? All right, we'll move on to item 8.2, which is discussion and possible action, if necessary, to comply with Arizona Open Meeting Law following the executive session regarding positional analysis. So we also met this afternoon in an executive session to discuss the positional analysis, which has been and remains a top priority of this council and our community. There is no need for a motion at this time, but we will have a work session this coming Thursday, August 27th, 2020, at 6:00 PM, where the city manager and the human resources director will bring forward options that achieve our objectives, which are focused on paying city employees at market rate and fixing the compaction issues within the pay structure. We are committed to getting this right. So again, we'll have a special work session this Thursday, 6:00 PM, here in the council chambers. Is there any further discussion or comments from council before I open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we did not receive any email from public@cityclerk@LHCaz.gov. Any last-minute comments from council before we move on? All right, we'll move on to item 8.3, which is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License, Wet Clam, 5601 Highway 95 North, Number 718. Ms. Williams.
Mayor and city council, Tammy Lynn Swam has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Wet Clam located at 5601 Highway 95 North, Number 718. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 liquor license. Staff recommends approval of this liquor license. Happy to answer any question, and the applicant is also here tonight to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Williams or the applicant? No? Would the applicant like to make any comments? You don't have to. Okay, perfect. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none in public attendance, and we did not receive any via email at cityclerk@LHCaz.gov, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dolan? Yes.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control approve a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Wet Clam, 5601 Highway 95 North, Number 718.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. And Councilmember McCoy, your verbal vote?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, and congratulations. All right, we'll move on to item 8.4, which is Adopt Ordinance Number 20-1241 for a Planned Development Rezone of Tract 2345, Block 1, Lot 1, from CCHD Commercial Health District to CCHDPD Commercial Health District Planned Development, approving a general development plan to allow a use exception for light industrial uses manufacturing at 1870 McCulloch Boulevard, which is the previous Kmart building. Mr. Morris?
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, thank you. Here's an area map of the subject property. I think most of everyone is familiar with the Kmart, old Kmart building location at McCulloch Boulevard between Capri and Riviera. The subject property is a portion of that whole Kmart shopping center. It's highlighted here. It includes a total of six acres and the 100,000-square-foot building that was the previous Kmart building. That shopping center also has a couple of little strip malls that aren't part of the request, and the Mojave County Library has some parking that's also not part of that request. So this request is only for the Kmart, 100,000-square-foot Kmart building, and the portion of the parking area in the front and the parking in the back. The current zoning is Commercial Health District, which is a commercial-type zoning. So the request is to go from Commercial Health District to Commercial Health District Planned Development. So that's kind of the key thing. They're not asking to be rezoned to a light industrial zoning district or an industrial district. They're asking for the same base zoning district, which is the Commercial Health District. And they're asking to go through what's called a planned development. Now, a planned development is a mechanism whereby you can ask for exceptions to the underlying zoning district. Many times, this happens with vacant property or property that hasn't been developed yet. Example could be like out at the mall, when they first formed, they had some planned development to allow them larger signage, to allow them different-sized parking spaces, different angles in their parking spaces, things that were required that the current previous development code didn't allow those standards. Now, a planned development is a mechanism whereby you can ask for exceptions to the underlying zoning district. Many times, this happens with vacant property, or property that hasn't been developed yet. Example could be like out at the mall, when they first formed, they had some, a planned development to allow them larger signage, to allow them different sized parking spaces, different angles in their parking spaces, things that were required that didn't, that the current, previous development code didn't allow those standards. So they allowed, they got allowed through what's called the planned development, so they were allowed exceptions to the underlying development code. That's very similar to what's being proposed here. Again, they're not changing the Commercial Health District, they're not changing it to Light Industrial District. They're asking for a light industrial type use to be allowed. The, if you look at the permitted uses table for the Commercial Health District, light industry is not among the allowed uses in there. So a mechanism to allow that is to go through this planned development to allow that use, and you'll see when we get later into the presentation, the planning commission recommended in addition to allowing that, putting conditions of approval on it, some things that limit, hopefully, what, how it might impact the neighborhood. We'll get into that a little bit later. So it's important to realize, they're not asking for a rezone to light industrial. They're keeping the same base zoning district, they're asking to allow this permitted use with some proposed stipulations. Of course, the city council can add them, subtract other stipulations, whatever you feel comfortable with doing. So that is the zoning for the subject property and most of the area around it. To the south, across Swanson Avenue, there's some residential multiple-family zoning that abuts the property across Swanson Avenue. Now, here's the site plan for the property that was submitted by the applicant. This blue highlighted area, again, is the subject property of six acres. The way they're proposing in their notice of intent is all the activities for this proposed light industrial use will be inside the building. That includes things like material storage, any sort of, any sort of inventory, everything will be inside, nothing will be stored outside. They're proposing up to three shifts, up to 24 hours a day. They're also suggesting that what they're calling noise-neutral, shouldn't be any noises or sound heard outside the building. As far as impact for traffic and whatnot, they're suggesting two semi-trucks per week starting up in the, with the entry, deliveries and shipping being at the rear behind the building, and then have UPS and FedEx daily, as most commercial businesses could do. As far as their parking for their employees, they're suggesting employees, majority of them will park in the rear behind the building. In fact, I bet a lot of people didn't know there was parking back there, but there's parking in the rear of that Kmart building, and that's where the delivery trucks and whatnot will also be arriving. And then, my understanding is they're going to ask the other employees, other employees to park away from the strip malls toward McCulloch's side for a couple reasons. Two, one, to ensure there's adequate parking for the businesses that are in those buildings, and also to give more of a presence of vehicles that make it look like there's something more going on at that shopping center when, as you know, when Kmart's not, since Kmart's been gone, that parking lot's not nearly as full, hardly anybody in there, and they're hoping the additional vehicles there will let people know, hey, something's going on As far as parking for the rest of the site, the, the subject property has about 250 parking spaces total, and then there are about 260 still left over for the other uses, the two strip centers, strip mall centers, and the library. So there's plenty of parking there. We don't anticipate any issues with parking. Now, when this went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommended approval, and as I alluded to earlier, they had some stipulations they were proposing to go along with the proposal for the plan development. Among them, there were five stipulations. I've got, of them, you'll see in, in your staff report, in the proposed ordinance, there are only four that staff felt were the most fitting to come onto the city council for your action and, and any, any comments you would have or any changes. The four that made it through were no outdoor storage, no outdoor activity related to manufacturing, no offensive odors outdoor created from activities within the building, and the existing building shall retain its retail appearance. Any changes to the exterior shall be approved by city staff. So those are all what the, what the city, what the planning commission recommended. The one that did not make it into this was that the PD, this planned development, would run with the existing business. And the reason that staff didn't feel that was appropriate to add to this is that when you're rezoning a property, the zoning typically goes with the property, not with the building, excuse me, not with the property owner or the business owner. In the zoning world, that zoning goes with the property. So in a case like this, whatever conditions the city council would put on this, that, those conditions would go with that property. So let's say, heaven forbid, this gets passed and the, the business goes out of business or moves away, that zoning's still on the property, it's still zoned Commercial Health District with all those uses that are allowed in the Commercial Health District, plus this additional use per this PD with whatever stipulations you choose to put on it. And so if someone else comes in to want to operate the same way that this other business did, with meeting those same conditions per the zoning and this planned development, they should be able to move right in and to do business the same way. So in that case, we, again, for zoning purposes and planning purposes, we don't like to have the PD or something run with the property, excuse me, run with the property owner, excuse me, run with the business or the property owner. If city council or someone else wanted to, the property owner or the applicant wanted to change, remove that planned development and those stipulations from it, they could go through the same process to remove that PD and/or any conditions. Again, it would go to Planning and Zoning Commission for recommendation, and then come on to city council for whatever your changes or recommendation, or, excuse me, whatever your decision would be on it. So just want to make that clear. And with that concludes staff's presentation. I know James Gray with the Partnership for Economic Development is here, I'm sure he'd like to give a presentation to if you allow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Do any members of the council have any initial questions for Mr. Morris before we bring up Mr. Gray? All right, Mr. Gray?
Well, good evening, mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here in person, not on Zoom. I know we're a little tired of Zoom, so it's nice to be here in person. Yes, quickly, we wanted to give a quick applicant discussion of 1870 McCulloch Boulevard. I wanted to touch on a few things. I wanted to cover some current retail trends, especially in big box. I wanted to cover some area of concerns that goes back to the public applicant meeting, and many of the items that were discussed in the planning and zoning. And then I want to do cover the restrictions that were placed on that and update it. And then finally, I want to talk about job creation and why we are so bullish about this, this project. I also have Rich Heine, along with his partner David Long, would like to share, they have owned the Kmart Center for 17 years, and give you a perspective on their efforts. We began working with Rich and David back in January of 2019. They knew what was coming, and they've been actively pursuing people, and I want him to discuss Jones Lang LaSalle and what they've done in their efforts to recruit people to the center. And then finally, give a little bit of his experience as he did a facility tour of PMG in Corona, California. And then finally, I would ask the owner of Premier Manufacturing to come, give his vision of their Arizona expansion and what he sees as, as their new headquarters. So with that, I'll just jump in really quickly. I'll go to the next slide. Economic developers without clickers, I mean, that's a world, right? Like, no one wants to see that. I want to talk about the trend that's accelerating. We know that bricks and mortar, overall, the sales, they're, they're down, and, and this is going all the way back, this trend line into 19, they're down 14% as where online retailers are up in that same. And so, we still do a majority of our shopping in bricks and mortars, don't, 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 don't think that we don't, but this trend line is especially affecting big-box retailers. The problem with big-box retailers that they're having right now is it's extremely hard for them to remain competitive in price, selection, and overhead when they're selling the very brands against their online competitors. And you can think about a facility like Kmart, what it costs to run 100,000 square foot facility when you're selling the very same brands that people can put in their Amazon Basket, or Wayfair, or any other online system. This was just updated August 20th. This is the Forbes closures, retail closures for 2020. This is just a trend line that, that we need to be aware of, of what's happening for facilities. We're not the only one. This is happening all across the nation, all across our state, whether it's rural or metro, we're having to deal with what are we going to do with these facilities? So if I go to the next slide, a couple of things that I think is, is of note. Currently, right now, we have a little over 300,000 square feet of vacant retail in spaces that are over 10,000 square feet. If I was to add spaces under 10,000 square feet, we would be well over the 400,000 square foot mark. That's a lot of open inventory. And I'm just going to pull out a few that we kind of know because they've been talking to us about it, as this has been a pretty wide conversation. The Old Sears in the McCulloch Plaza. So along with the Old Sears and its neighbor, that's 20,000 square feet, that's been empty since 2015. Come this October, Hastings will be closed and empty for four years. We have spaces at the shops at Lake Havasu that have been empty and never filled since 2008. So it brings us to a scenario of what are we going to do with these facilities? Because leaving them empty, in, in, in my estimate, estimation, is not a healthy thing. So let me pause and go to the next slide, which is areas of concern for this particular project. These were things that culminated out of the applicant public meeting back on June 22nd. And I'll just cover noise and deliveries first. We believe the project is noise-neutral. There's a couple reasons to think that. One, we've done some decibel testing in the Corona facility. His facility is operating at about 16.4 decibels on the sound meter. So just to give you some reference, we created a small scenario where we got sound in the space to hit between 85 and 90 decibels, and then we walked outside and we couldn't get a registering of that on the meter outside of the door. But what's more interesting is then we started walking down to the corner of Swanson, and so the standing resting street noise was 50 to 55. If you had one car come by, it would hit 70. If you had two, it'd be about 80. So these are the type of noise levels that we're talking about, and one of the reasons that before we did the sound testing, that we really believed it was noise-neutral, is because you think about how a facility like this is used. If you literally have a retail, you're going to have thousands of people coming in and out of there every single day in cars. Cars create noise. They're there for 20 minutes. It's in, it's out, it creates neighborhood noise. That's in a traffic. So what we're proposing is everything's indoor, and so we believe that it'll actually have benefit in the noise arena. We believe the same thing in deliveries. So tracking the amount of deliveries that it takes everywhere from milk and eggs and TVs to tennis rackets to dresses to fill 100,000 square feet, you can see that through logistically scheduling loads for the manufacturer, and he's forecasting two per week. Now, he does get UPS and FedEx daily as, as all businesses do right now. And so we feel like that is not going to be any different than the Kmart operator has been doing for the last, for the last 17 years. They also have no deliveries after hours. And then finally, we have discussed the hours of operation, and I know that that gave pause to some people, but I just want to put it into perspective. And the perspective is this, the last tenant that operated in their Kmart, they were open from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. In December, they operated 24 hours a day. All 365 days a year, they operated 24 hours a day, as does all the other groceries on McCulloch Avenue. Why? Because there has to be bakers there to prepare stuff for the morning, we have to stock shelves, we have to clean. And so in a sense, when we talk about running this, we're talking about running eight to 12 employees at night to keep the facility going. So that, it's not running full shifts at night. We're talking about running a very limited shift, just like any other grocery store. And finally, because we did have a few conversations about this, I'll go to the next slide, and I want to talk about parking. And I think that that was very well covered. There is quite a bit of parking in the back, there's 68 spots in the back. The full lot one that we're talking about, in that lot, has 252 spots. What PMG has come up with a parking plan is to create, as Mr. Morris said, all the parking on the McCulloch side, but I want to give you a reason on why that. The owner of PMG comes out of a long history of retail in the automotive sales. He was first to recognize, we need to put cars out to look like the whole center's busy. You know, we were there last Thursday, and there were seven cars parked in the entire parking lot. So he understands, let's, let's show that there's some activity in the space, and so it, so it comes from that. And then I want to go to the next slide, and I just want to touch on these. So here is the four restrictions that are before you today. There should be no outdoor storage. Currently, right now, in the 60,000 square feet in Corona, doesn't keep stuff outside pertaining to the manufacturing. A lot of the stuff that they're using is very expensive, so they use it, then they recycle it, then they go buy more, it's not stuff to stay outside. In this case, he has plenty of room to utilize all indoor storage. He currently manufactures 100% inside in Corona, California. He feels extremely comfortable to live within that. There should be no offensive odors. I can tell you from my site visit that there's a couple things. One, he's not producing that, but two, he also pays for some very sophisticated filtration systems on all these machines. They're, they're not meant to be operated outdoor in weather, they're, they're very precise machines, they're indoor, and so they have all these capabilities. And then finally, the existing building shall retain its retail appearance. Any changes to the exterior shall be approved by city staff. I just want to let you know that in his plan, he plans to paint the entire building. He is, he is planned to put together, he wants to add split-face rock on the columns on the front to upgrade the professional look of the building. And then where there's the older, I'll call it outdated, but it's a commercial entry system for carts, he's going to remove that and modernize that by adding full glass and professional enclosures. So from the outside, you're just going to get an upgrade of the facility. And as far as signage, I think he's already shown the sign that he would like to put for the manufacturing facility, but he wants to remain within that because, like I said, his past experience in retail, he totally understands what it means to, to drive customers. And then finally, I will go to the next slide. And this is why we are incredibly invested in this, in this process. We do have a couple of update. If you look at the first year and second year, there's been a couple of updates there. You can see in year one, the owner of the facility has been laying out the new advanced manufacturing and some of the smart processes. He has added some additional robotics and automation to a couple of the assembly lines, so the capital investment has gone up. And what it's done is it's sped up the full-time employees that he's looking to hire in year one, and it sped it up in year two. So that, that is, that, that obviously is great news for us in our economy right now. But then I also want to point to- But then I also want to point to the jobs over there. I know that you received a letter from MCC supporting this project. And the reason they support this is because of the diversified skill sets that sit on the right side of that job. They're currently putting together a lot of training and Kingman right now for these very same jobs. They feel like they could play an integral part of creating more skilled labor. And I know that they've already talked with the owner about participating in that. As far as the jobs, the Arizona Commerce Authority is behind this. Why? Because they're net new Arizona jobs. We have had a lot of people that get quality job credits. We've had a lot of people get that. We've never had a qualified facility receive that designation. Ryan and his team qualify for that. That's a big deal. That means that he's paying a wage that's a lot higher than the median wage, but he's also investing in the facility. And so that's why it's captured the Arizona Commerce Authority. So with that, I'd like to bring up Rich Heiney, one of the partners that own the center, to talk about his efforts and their team's efforts of the retail of the space and then also his experience with PMG.
Thank you, James. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Rich Heiney. And I've had a presence in Lake Havasu since 1984. Bought my first, second home on Holly. And actually lived here for a period of time. I'm a commercial real estate broker and investor. I have a daughter that still lives here in Lake Havasu and two grandsons are going to school here and down in Phoenix as well. We have made a major effort to try to bring tenants into the Kmart Center or Havasu Mart as we know it and really make them successful. That's our primary goal. And this has been an effort going on for a long time. We have had the issue of Sears Holdings struggling for many years now. But our Kmart building, when we bought that property 17 years ago, was the number one performing Kmart west of the Mississippi. That obviously before Home Depot and Walmart and Sam's Club and things of this nature in the area. We realized that we were going to have to make a major effort. And we were actually kind of surprised when Sears called me and said that they were going to move out because a lot of the indications were because the property was still doing pretty well that they were going to hang in there. So when they closed it down in February, we decided to try to locate a top-notch premier national firm to help us locate retail tenants. And we did. We hired Jones Langlosal out of Phoenix, and we've made that effort. One of the other things that we did was that we realized that we might have to split up the building. So we did a rendering of the building showing three different sections of approximately 33,000 square foot each with a complete new face on the property to try to attract these tenants. We did have Ashley Furniture here in Lake Havasu say, we'd kind of like to have a secondary location, but we only want like 16,000 feet. We have 101,000 feet in there and breaking it up. It just really wasn't viable. I also had U-Haul out of Phoenix call me and say, we'd like to maybe bring up our whole building and, I mean, our whole operation, buy your whole building. That wasn't going to fly for us as well either. So I've continued to work with James Gray and Partnership for Economic Development Havasu for well over a year to see what else we could find. We had to think outside the box. The other issues that we have run into in trying to find an outside retail tenant is most of these big tenants, they want a 250,000 population base to work with, which would include Kingman, Parker, Lake Havasu City, but we just don't have it here. Here are some of the people that we have contacted through James Long, James, JLL and myself, Ross, Ulta, I talked about Ashley, Target, At Home, Vasa Fitness, Floor and Decor, Sprouts, Burlington, Best Buy, Kohl's, EOS Fitness, Indoor Entertainment, Harbor Freight Tools, Cal Ranch, American Freight Furniture, Pet Smart, DD Discount, I talked about U-Haul, Smart and Final, Aldi, Trader Joe's and TJ Maxx. Again, all of those issues just did not work for them. We're here to help us think outside the box. We are excited about Ryan coming to this city. I have an invested interest in Havasu. I've loved it. I've lived here. I've voted here for a long time. Hopefully you understand our need to think outside the box and bring this manufactured operation into Lake Havasu City. Thank you very much. Oh, one other thing. I want to tell you about the tour that I took of their facility along with my partner in Corona. On June 4th, 2020, David Long and I, who was my partner, 17-year owners of the Kmart Center in Lake Havasu City, visited the current manufacturing location of Premier Manufacturing, Inc. in Corona, California. We toured this complete facility from their offices, their engineering areas, to the manufacturing and shipping floor. We were impressed with the high level of activity and friendly smiles and highs that we received as we walked around. The facility was very busy, however, but it was clean and well organized. We noticed no noxious fumes or excessive noise during our tour, and the intricate operation of the CNC machines were impressive. There was a powder coating area with a heated drying area that was clean, well lighted, and again with no noxious fumes. We are excited about the possibility of this manufacturing operation coming to our Kmart building and that will again provide jobs to this community, which were lost when Sears Holding closed the Kmart Retail operation. And we realize the finding of another big box retailer would be nearly impossible. This operation along with many well-paid employees will also provide a boost to Lake Havasu City as well as the business and sales opportunities for the other tenants in our center. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm Ryan Bostardo and I'm excited about the project. I'm here to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So Mr. Bostardo, is it?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, perfect. Is the applicant?
Or just Ryan, either or.
All right, perfect. Well, we'll go into initial questions from the council and then we'll open up the public hearing. If, do any members of the council have any initial questions for the applicant or for staff? Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
First of all, I'm super excited for any kind of industry, manufacturing, industrial, whatever wants to come to Lake Havasu to provide jobs for us. I will tell you, I have had some concerns from the citizens about the location. And I've seen what's been put down here, but I have some questions that were asked by some community members. So some of them you may have answered already and I haven't heard them or they haven't heard them, but I just said everything and I'll just do them one at a time and I'll let you answer them.
Sure, thank you.
The first question is, have you already applied for a business license here?
No, ma'am, not yet.
The second question, is there already a signed lease and contract already signed?
There is a signed lease, yes, ma'am, with provisions, yes.
Are these the questions that we're asking?
Yeah.
Has work already been started in the plaza?
Yes, ma'am. I've started to paint and clean the building up in hopes and preparation.
As for employees, that's great, provide jobs. We will be bringing in California employees recruiting in here. So I think the question is, the majority of new hires, would that be from local?
Yeah, that's a real good question. I heard you great. I figure somewhere between 93% to 97% will be local hire employees from the town here. That's a reason, really, one of the main reasons for us coming here. Yes, ma'am. All we manufacture are machines and products that are made out of steel and other materials, raw materials.
Okay.
All-American manufacturer, I guess you could call us.
Okay. And then I think the last question I have is actually for Mr. Gray, and he's already answered it, but I would like to see if he could answer that question out loud. James, could you tell us, will the city be collecting any tax revenue from this business and what that looks like?
Yeah, so currently, right now, the tax situation is currently the property tax is about 47,000 on the facility. Currently, PMG is an omni-channel retailer. They sell online. So for the online sales tax, you're looking at every item that he would sell in the state that he has a premise. So right now, that would be if he was awarded this, Arizona and California, that he would pay, although we can't collect the California one. We'll probably look into how to do that. That would be great if we could, but I don't think they'll allow us, right?
That'd be great.
That'd be great, but I don't think California will let us do that. And then finally, the corporate income tax, that's, although they save in a lot of ways, so that's 4.9%. So that's a big chunk of change that he'll be paying. That answers the tax question.
Okay. All right, any other initial questions from council before we open the public hearing?
I have one from Brian. Just want to welcome you to town. I'm totally 100% behind the business. I think the business is great. These are amazing jobs. This is what Havasu needs. I just want to welcome you to town. Unfortunately, I need to take the business off the side because it is a zoning change and that's kind of how I look at it. And I guess my concern is, is there a backup plan to this? If, I know we've come this far along and we're hoping that the city council gives a thumbs up or a thumbs down, but have we looked at other locations? Is there, I guess, is there a backup plan? Are all the eggs in the basket sitting in front of us right now is my concern?
It's a good question. There's always a backup plan. You know, we have a huge worldwide demand for our products, so there's a race to fill the product void and to make sure that the market, somebody else doesn't come in on the market. So, you know, the backup plan, if this wasn't to go down, is to find the quickest, you know, the first 100,000 square foot building I could find in Nevada someplace to save tax rate and put the machinery that I've already purchased. You know, the slide said it was, I purchased 4.4 million worth of machinery so far and it's going up. So I need to find a home for that machinery and get it working. Does that make, did I answer your question?
It does help, I guess, and...
So no, I guess. I don't have a complete backup plan as I stand here.
To me, it comes down, the zoning issue, of course, is a big concern, setting precedent to, you know, the other businesses. And if we allow, like I said, I like the idea of it, you know, allowing limitations that it's to your business, but then if the next business comes in, you know, you're successful and I need a 200 or another one or 200,000 square foot building. I guess, and another approach too, is I've heard that, you know, conditional use permit, is that something that we didn't look at as far? Like I said, it's just that long-term goal of once we stamp this, now it's light industrial is allowed in that building. And then why can't it go? And, you know, as we see, there's a lot of that area there. And with the retail issues we're having is, you know, I'm just afraid now we're opening it up to any retail that can't be filled could be light industrial, which, you know, now we've opened the door to that. But I guess, have we looked at the option of it? Like I said, I get we have a building there and we can use it. Have we looked into a conditional use permit while we can help you build a new building here? You know, we have land at the Agave Park and other areas, but is that something that we've looked into?
Yeah, we did, of course. When you make a decision like this in anticipation, this is a great big business deal. So, you know, our team gets together in the beginning of all this and we looked at all of those things together with city meetings, with city planning here. And we thought that based on our long-term vision, and we're great neighbors, if you guys grant this, you'll see. But based on our long-term vision, we thought that this would be the very best change. And I kind of fought some of the people on it because I'm fighting that void to fill. You know, I'm racing the clock. So this was a longer process than maybe another one might have been. So we did look at all the options upfront with our whole team and felt that this was the best way to go with our long-term vision at heart, if that makes sense. But yes, we did.
Mr. Morris, did you want to say a couple of things on that as well?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you. The question came up about a conditional use permit. In our permitted uses table, under each different zoning category, there are different types of uses. And then going down each column under the zoning district, it lists whether that is a permitted use, which is just allowed, and then whether it could be allowed with a conditional use permit. So under the commercial health district category, under that column, under light industry, it's blank. That means it's not an allowed use. If there was a letter C there, that would mean it could be allowed with a conditional use permit. So there was no conditional use permit option available. And so the next choice was go through the plan development process. Another thing is a conditional use permit is heard and reviewed and approved with conditions by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is not required to go on to the city council. So twofold, a conditional use permit was not an option. And this is a very important decision, I believe, for the community. And it seems more appropriate that that decision should be made at the ultimate level in the city, which is at the city council. So that conditional use permit option was reviewed and examined and found it wasn't really going to work in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, thank you for that. It brings it all back. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, you're good, yeah. Just answer your question, Mr. Dolan. All right, any other questions or comments initially of the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McCoy?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to say that I had, after review and talking with so many of our constituents, a lot of people, the concerns. I spent a great deal of time speaking with James Gray and he was able to clarify all of the things that the people had asked me. And I just, I felt like I was able to respond what their concerns were. I want to thank James for spending the time with me to answer those. The one thing we didn't discuss was the parking. I think that, you know, having that parking and like you said, getting more cars in that area scene is a great idea. But the way that you marked it off, are you planning to enclose the parking or keep it so that only your cars can park in those particular slots?
There's, if you're studying the lot now, no one ever parks in the spots that are along the streets. And when I say never, I had, there was, I asked a couple semis to leave earlier this week that were parking there and doing an exchange. So I think by parking on the opposite side by the street on McCullough, you'll draw traffic into the center, helping the retailers, making it look like action. So I don't think we'll have a problem. We'll instruct, you know, our human resources will instruct our employees to do that. And I don't think we'll have a problem with anybody parking there obstructing it. There's so much parking in the center.
But you're not planning to fence it off and say, this is my parking and you can't park there?
No, no, ma'am. I sure wasn't. I think that would be a blight on the center there. But no, no, that wasn't in the plans at all.
Okay, great, thank you. I just want to say that, you know, this has been a difficult decision for the council and especially with the pros and cons. None of us like to see our retail go away, but I think that's a sign of the times, you know, with everybody, especially during the pandemic ordering online. And anytime, I've always been for our city, pro jobs. And anytime we can bring as little as 60, which is not a little number, by the way, up to 150 or more, that's a great thing for our city. So I thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. We're real excited to do it.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy. Councilmember Groh, did you still have a question?
Well, I do. Sir, I want to thank you for looking at Lake Havasu with a tremendous opportunity like this, not just for your own self and your company, but for all the people who live here. You know, as I look down the list of jobs, I see a lot of things that people in this community actually can do and people might not widely be aware of that. CAD/CAM, CNC programming, IT videographer. We have some of the best soldering technicians on the face of the planet Earth in this city. I'm not going to mention the name of the company, but I will just say this, that you understand just how nice it's going to be for you to be able to choose people who have worked in some of the operations around here. We have an ISO 9001 and AS 9100 certified organization. I'm sure you're familiar with those quality ratings. One primarily manufactures into aerospace for the Defense Department and the Defense Advanced Research Projects Agency. Another one where you'll find a lot of really good soldering technicians. creates control boards for electron microscopes that are doing research into novel coronavirus. If you have an endoscopic procedure done pretty much in any hospital in the United States and many around the world, we made those control boards right here. I was a roboticist operating one of the most highly throughput robotics for pick and place machines in the world at ninety thousand components an hour. We have an amazing group of people in this community that could be part of your team. But what I want to ask you is for the people who are listening and the people who are here, all the questions that, you know, would this create noise or would it create sound? I can assure everybody, the answer to that is no. And the reason I would know that on a firsthand basis is I managed a manufacturing plant that made equipment, not too dissimilar from what you're making. It was downhole equipment for the oil and gas industry. In addition, we also did rubber and urethane and plastic injection molding like Sterlite. But a lot of the CNC and the precision parts for downhole technologies for the scientific measurements of oil and gas wells, we make. And those positions are highly skilled, highly technical positions. You don't just walk in and know this.
No.
Therefore, they pay well. And what I wanted to ask you, so that you could convey this to everybody here, what do you figure your range of salaries might look like? What can the people in Lake Havasu City expect in terms of, you know, that?
I'm actually really glad you asked that question because there's been, I've heard a lot of scuttle, you know, about we're coming here to save labor. That's not true. We're coming here to save tax. We're coming here because I love this community, you know, that's why we're coming here. So, you know, I would say that, that, and it's in my, my letter of intent, what the actual wage is, we don't hire anybody under sixteen that sweeps, that starts at the very bottom. So when you're young starting. But our average wage that, from our payroll is sixteen hundred and some change. It's in the, I can look it up here, but it's sixteen hundred and some change a week. We pay on Fridays, we always have, that's how we do it. So, you know, there is, and that's, that's an average of all of our taxable payroll at each and every week. It's public knowledge, you can look it up. But, you know, I believe in, in paying well. I believe in full-time employment. I believe in building a good, solid team, and I believe in the team being strong and healthy. So, and everybody being able to afford the American dream on the team. So, and if they can't do it on day one, but they have a path and a vision and, and a means to actually do it at some time if they put the effort in, that's what I believe in. So that's kind of how our business is set up. So it's very common to have somebody start that knows nothing, right out of high school, that just has, you know, desire. And a lot of those people are, are what are in our upper management now because they've worked all the positions and they've went to all the schools, they've got all the training, and they're our best people, they're our biggest assets. So I hope that's answered your question. And I don't have the exact, it's in the.
That's a great answer. You don't need an exact. I just wanted everybody who's listening tonight, whether they're online or in the audience, to have a sense of the kind of employee you are because that's the kind of quality employment that, you know, any city would be very lucky to have. I wanted to also thank you for the attention you've paid to the parking issues because that's always a question. And I used to do a lot of economic development back in my day, and my expression was, you want to have a parking problem. You're not going to have a parking problem, but what you are going to have, instead of the tumbleweeds that blow through that parking lot now, are people who are making good salaries. You're going to have the action vibe going. But in addition to that, those people are going to be consuming product of the people who are in that strip mall. So everybody's business is going to start to prosper as opposed to suffering. Now, there are some that won't be affected much, like, you know, everybody goes to the same pool store type deal, you know. I don't know if Domino's, you know, I don't know about, you know, their carryout business. But I can say that I really appreciate the attention you've paid to that, and so I thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and then if you could stay around, we'll probably have several questions afterwards.
Would you like me to stay here, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please. Yeah, oh, in the back, and then we'll let citizens that want to speak come up to the podium. Again, you don't have to sign up, but we will open the public hearing at this point. Come to the microphone, state your name for the record, and then I'll read your comments. Again, there is a light indicator box to the left by Ms. Williams. Green means you have five minutes, so during a public hearing, you have five minutes. Yellow would be one minute remaining, and red is, is the five minutes is up. So with that being said, please just make your way to the podium. And we do have several public comments that were submitted to us that Ms. Williams and Ms. Davis, welcome, will read into the record this evening as well. So we'll start with those in the, in the room. So please just make your way up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Tom Askland. I've been a resident of Lake Havasu for thirty years, and I've always specialized in commercial real estate. So I think I understand the retail environment at this point, which is extremely poor. It's, it's really a shame, but it is what it is. We can't change it. One of the things I've, I've found out over time is when retailers came to town, they would try and do their demographics to try and figure out, you know, could they really afford to be here? And in many cases, they couldn't get their demographics correct because we have so many people that are winter or summer visitors, just tourists. And just a lot more bodies than really show up on the demographics, and that's always been a problem. I want to give you an example of one, and I know that most of the commercial brokers have probably contacted Trader Joe's to get them here because everybody wants a Trader Joe's. Well, and they're very, they're very nice people, but they just tell you flat out, you know, once you get to a hundred thousand people, we'll put you on the bottom of the list. So, you know, chances of getting a Trader Joe's, which is, they're only like sixteen thousand feet or something, this is never going to happen. So, you know, having to do something with this retail building is extremely important. And, and the thing that I like about it is bringing jobs, you know, good paying jobs, which this town really needs. And, you know, because there's a lot of people come here and they may run a, you know, some, a small operation of some sort, shuffling stuff in and out of a warehouse, but those people don't make a lot of money. The type of technical knowledge necessary to do this job, to do this manufacturing, is, is really going to create a lot of what I call wealthy people. And they might start off at, you know, twenty years old, and by the time they're forty, they're going to be well-retired. Anyway, in, in addition to that, I've known Rich Heiney for close to thirty years. He and I actually worked at Coldwell Banker for a short period of time back in nineteen ninety, I think it was. Anyway, so I've known him for a long time, and I know he's an honest person. And from what I've met of the manufacturing company, their, their principles, I feel the same way. I, I think this is a good deal for Havasu. And one more thing, having the, the cars parked in the parking lot on the front, I think is really going to be a plus to the center. But also, it's going to be a plus to all the other smaller retailers in the center. And I'm sure that there is concern that, oh, that's not retail. But there's still going to be a lot of employees who are making a lot more money than retailers that can come over and spend it in their stores. So I think, I think that's a real plus. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is John Parrott. I live at twenty-four ninety Lima Drive. I'm employed at Coldwell Banker Real Estate. I'm, I'm a Realtor, and I do specialize in commercial real estate, and I don't have any involvement with any of the parties here, so I have no financial dog in the fight. They have lived here a long time, as you can tell from all these wrinkles. And, you know, one of the reasons that I moved here in nineteen seventy-five was because I admired McCullough's planned community. And I, I think our zoning that we have is an important aspect. And, you know, if you go to Bullhead, you will see a mansion next door to an outdoor repair shop. And Havasu is very fortunate for that. It cost McCullough a lot of money to do that zoning because it would have been a lot easier to just scrape the desert off and sell the lots for anything he wanted to. The, so when this came up, you know, I was a little on the skeptical side. And a client of mine who owns the building right next to the Kmart building was not able to attend the neighbors' meeting, so he asked me to go. And all of my concerns, you know, were, were answered. I realize that we are, you know, changing zoning here, but I would submit to you that we've done that a number of times. I mean, I own a building on McCullough, and when I bought it, all I could do was retail. Well, now I can build an office on the second floor. I can build condos for residents on the third and fourth floor. We used to have a thing that every backyard had to have a twenty-five-foot setback. You couldn't build anything in it. Now we let people build storage units that block everybody's view, you know. So I guess what I'm saying is that, that times change. And obviously, the people have illustrated the changing nature of retail, and there's no point in me belaboring that. The, the retail space that's vacant is frightening. And it's, it's just never going to fill up. The, you know, I think, I think somebody pointed out at that meeting that the largest Target store today that they're building is forty-two thousand feet, and Target never goes into an existing building. They always want to build their own. The, so I think our community really needs these jobs. I don't think the pain from COVID is, is over yet. There's going to be more of those small businesses who are hanging on by their fingernails. And these kind of jobs and the kind of training that they're going to give these people. I, I'll tell you, when I sat in the meeting, the thing that excited me the most was them talking about the people who would be supervising the robots who were cutting the pieces which would be used to assemble the machines. And, you know, I think that, I thought that was going to be fifteen people or something. And I thought to myself, you know, there's going to be five or seven or ten of those people who are going to learn so much about robots that they're going to go out and start their own company. And I think it's, it's really an economic development opportunity, and we don't want to give James Gray a raise because he hasn't caused it. The, so I'm not here to tell you what to do, but I will tell you what I would do if I were in your shoes, if I were sitting there where Mr. Lane is. I would feel it was my duty to the fifty-five thousand people to bring these jobs here. And, and I think you got to figure out a way to do that. But I think you also have to figure out a way to protect the neighbors and the people. And obviously, the no noise, no odor, no trucks, I mean, all of those things have been addressed. But, but if there's a better way to protect the neighbors, then I'm all for it. I just think that we need those jobs. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah. There are still some seats in the, the main audience, too, if anyone's in the hallway that would like to move in.
Hi, Mayor Sheehy and council members. I am back at the podium. I am here as a private citizen. My name's Lisa Krueger. I live at twenty-eight ninety-one Indian Land Drive. I've lived in Lake Havasu City for about, for a long time. I've lived in this part of the state for thirty-two years. I used to live in Parker. I used to drive from Parker to go to that Kmart. I was so excited when it first opened because it was so much better than shopping at Sprouse, right? Or whatever it was called, and Yellowfront. So it was great to have Kmart, but I certainly know that the face and, and the mechanism of retail has changed. I think we all have, you know, it's like we used to say we had things on speed dial. Now we just hit that Amazon app like there's nothing to it. And I'll be the first person to tell you that I believe in local shopping, and I shop locally just as much as I can. Now, times have changed, and I think we have a wonderful opportunity to welcome PMG to town. They're not just bringing us jobs, they're bringing us great jobs. I've done some research on the company. Their company culture is amazing. Their team members over in Corona love it. They love working there. They worked there for a long time. I also think it's an exciting opportunity because when you hire people, people have money to spend in their communities, and the trickle-down effect can be enormous. I think everybody's aware that our unemployment rate as of June thirtieth was twelve point eight percent. That's the highest it's been since the Great Recession. Now, we all know that that is pandemic-related, but we also have to keep in mind that a lot of those people that are unemployed because of the pandemic are applying for public assistance for the first times in their life. And based on some of the things that I do and some of the people that I've talked to, it's very difficult for people that have never applied for assistance to have to apply for assistance. It's embarrassing for them. And this is our opportunity to maybe retrain and reskill in a field and work for this company that wants to make this investment and strengthen our local economy. So I really hope that you will take a listen to this little phrase that I like to tell people from time to time. Change is good, you go first. So let's let PMG go first and lead the way in bringing this facility, these jobs, this opportunity to Lake Havasu City because I know it will cause the effect that others will follow. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Rob Miles. I moved here in Janu, in January twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-four. Moved here in the middle of my junior year of high school. I graduated here from college at MCC. I got a degree in criminal law with a minor in business management. I decided to stay here. I gave up a career in law enforcement to open up my own business. I own the Hallmark store, and I also partnered it with my mail and shipping store. It's called the Mail Store &amp; More. I moved into that center over in the Kmart Plaza November of two thousand seventeen is when I was able to open with the Hallmark in my store. I am one hundred percent in favor of these jobs coming to this town. One hundred percent. I've said from the get-go, we need to get good manufacturing, good paying jobs in this town. The Kmart building is not the place for it. People are saying that they're going to shop in my store. When, during their lunch hour? What do I do between nine and twelve? What do I do from one to five? Do I just bank on the people, general public, come in my store? What do I do on Saturday when people aren't working normal shift during a Monday through Friday, eight to five shift? They say it's a twenty-four-hour facility. That's great. And I'm all, like I said, I'm all about the jobs. I'm just wondering why we can't facilitate another location for them in this town. And I heard somebody mention, you know, using the building as a conditional use until another building is secured for them. I think that's a good idea. I'm, I'm kind of okay with that on a temporary basis, now that that's been proposed. But for a full-time basis, no. A number of you, a couple of you have been in my store, I've talked to on the phone. Couple of you actually know me, know me. So I'm going to be very blunt and very honest with my opinions, and you guys know I'm never going to change that. When PMG and the PED did their initial presentation to the area residents and as business owners, they were very vague about the applications of their product. They told us that there was many applications for it, but they didn't tell us exactly how they market their product. They market their product for one use and one use only. You can look it up on YouTube, you can look it up on Google, and you'll see how it's marketed. If they are vague about how they present to the business owners and the residents of the area, how do we know they're not being vague about what they want to do here now? If this is approved, the city is most likely seeing either the closure of the businesses in that small retail buildings to the side in Lot Number Two. And the reason why I say that is, is anytime manufacturing is moved in next to retail, retail disappears. They either move or they close their doors. I'm going to tell you right now, I've moved my business twice already. Each time to better my location and to get better business for my store. If this happens, I am closing my doors, and I will move out of town. This is possibly costing thirty jobs in that plaza to make sixty or eighty in the first year or two that they're projecting. If you move or facilitate a different location to begin with, instead of the Kmart building, you are saving the jobs of possibly the people that are in that center for at least a year, if not a little bit longer. If you allow them to move in there and do the rezoning, you're looking at all the jobs in those plazas probably closing in about six months to a year. Now, honest, this is my opinion. Now, honest, this is my opinion, not that I know fact on that, but this is what I foresee. I didn't go to school, and I'm no dummy for no reason. If I was to move my business, it costs me $10,000 each time I move it. I've got hundreds of thousands of dollars over 13 years wrapped up in my business. And again, if this happens, I will probably close. Does the city council realizing having this company in a retail center also decreases the value of the store, meaning my store, when and if I decide to sell my business? This also could have an adverse effect on the surrounding property values. Now, I know it's been reported in the news that the Mojave County tax assessor says it could have no adverse effects. Could. Nothing's a guarantee. Even I could be wrong. I admit that. If this is passed, this will set a precedent in what will happen when it comes to rezoning for retail buildings in the plaza. What happens if Albertson's closes? What happens if Safeway closes? What happens if Smiths closes? Will we rezone that for manufacturing? Are we going to push out all the small business in this town because of all the other small businesses that are in those plazas to allow manufacturing into each one of those buildings? I assume that means my time's up?
Yes, I missed the light indicator box. Okay. Yeah, you can wrap up your comments, though.
Okay, thank you. The PED loves to say the big-box retail is dying. I don't disagree. But my business is increasing. Now, COVID has created a kind of a perfect storm, I guess you could say, right now. People, this, people in this town aren't traveling. They're using my store to send out greeting cards and gifts. So my business is up. If COVID wasn't going on, my business would be down because Kmart's out. So when they move in and COVID disappears, I'm projecting a 15% to 20% drop in my business compared to what I'm doing right now. Not that that's bad, which, you know, theoretically it is, because I'd love to keep my business growing. But I don't see it growing without retail in that building. Now, if they wanted to reinvest in the building and they said subdivide it into, you know, four sections of 33,000 square feet, why can't it be subdivided into more than just three units? Why not five? Why not 10? You can create more small business going in there, which generates more jobs, and PMG can still go to another complex in the center, or in the town, I mean. So these are my concerns. Again, I'm all about the jobs. I find it a little disconcerting that I found out that they've had a permit pulled and they're already doing work in there when there's a signed lease but no authorization to do business. So it, to me, it looks like somebody's telling them everything's going to be okay, and everything's on the up and up, and everything's already done. And I don't like that's how it's perceived. I think there needs to be some accountability to this, and I think there needs to be some oversight of it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this matter?
My name's Lee Gicking. I'm co-owner of the Hallmark and Mail Store. One of the things that's been brought up and repeatedly is that parking lot. And everybody's saying that it's empty, it's empty. Let me say, COVID. COVID. Nobody's going shopping with COVID. And the gym is closed. Our gym cannot be open. The governor has said, no gyms. That gym brings in a lot of our business. That gym has a lot of people in there, and our parking lot is pretty dang full when that gym is in, working. You can guarantee, and I have done it numerous times, pulled up at work when that gym is going, and I have no place to park. And I have to go park out by the street because that gym is full. So please don't sit there and say that our parking lot is vacant and that there are nobody shopping in our stores. COVID has happened. They cannot open the gyms. This hair salon is not as busy as it used to be right now because of COVID. COVID's not going to be here forever. I guarantee that. COVID will go away. And when it does, what's going to be there if the manufacturing comes in? And you've set precedence, so it will always be manufacturing, and it pushes us out. We've already been told that they have decided that if things go well, they get this approval and everything, and they go on and do what they've already apparently been approved for, that they are going to look at buying the entire complex. Well, that's the writing on the wall to me. And that's the writing on the wall telling me that my business is of no value in that center, so therefore I'll be having to close down and leave. And since my retirement's wrapped up in that Hallmark business, I can guarantee you. I have a daughter that lives in Mississippi. We will be moving east with our company. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? We'll go ahead and move over to the city clerk to start reading some of the other comments that we received at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov. And then we'll allow in-person comments as well to continue. But Ms. Williams?
The first comment was received on August 16th, 2020, with the subject line of CBD. Regarding rezoning Kmart for a CBD oil distributor manufacturer-
Yeah, Ms. Williams. I'm sorry to do this. Can you guys move to the podium? Just with these acrylic barriers, we're having a hard time hearing the words. I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the first comment was received on August 16th, 2020. Subject line of CBD. Regarding rezoning Kmart for a CBD oil distributor manufacturer, we, Robert and Shirley Hall, reside at permanent Lake Havasu. We do not think rezoning Kmart for a CBD oil manufacturer in the middle of town is a smart idea. Number one, not zoned for manufacturer. Number two, the town has little downtown that is noteworthy. A lot of vendors use McCulloch downtown for displays. Not the correct message to the public. Number three, it may attract drug traffic. Number four, the jobs will be available on the other side of town. We recommend not rezoning Kmart, and if we have to have this for tax purposes in the proper zone area. I would like to see more restaurants and a Target. We are unable to attend the meeting August, it says 26th, 25th, and hope this can be forwarded to the proper person.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This written comment was received Friday, August 21st, 2020, with the subject line of Rezone of 1870 McCulloch Boulevard North. Attention, Mayor Sheehy, Vice Mayor Lane, council members Koch, Dolan, Groth, Lynn, and McCoy. References made, case name, PNG PD, Rezone of 1870 McCulloch Boulevard North to CCHD PD, Commercial and Health Plan Development District, to allow a light industrial use manufacturing in the CCHD district, based on the application from Premier Manufacturing Incorporated. We are opposed to this zoning change for a number of reasons explained later in this email. On July 22nd, we watched the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to consider Premier Manufacturing Incorporated application to make the above zoning change. During the meeting, about 20 emails were read, which all opposed the zoning change for a number of well-explained reasons. After explaining to all of these emails, Chairman Jim Harris said, I guess everyone is opposed to the change, and then ignored having a discussion about them and went about asking for a motion to approve the zoning change. This was very disappointing to ignore fair considerations of opposition to the rezone. Then he called for the vote passing 6 to 1. It is our hope that the mayor and council will be more considerate and look at all of the pros and cons of this rezone. It is very hard for us to understand that you would consider or approve a manufacturing facility in the heart of Lake Havasu City, along historic McCulloch Boulevard, and very close to our own beautiful city library. Zoning districts were no doubt well-thought-out and established a number of years ago. Why would you make a zoning change in order to help an owner of the building and the owner of the manufacturing company at the expense of the many condo owners across Swanson Avenue, which is zone residential? We own a condo at Southwest Retreat, which faces the entrance to the shopping center driveway off of Swanson Avenue. This condo is approximately 100 feet from the building that the zoning change is requested. Our condo complex has 58 units which are affected by this request. L condos has two buildings of over 100 units across from the building that are also affected by this rezone. If you approve this zoning change, is it your intention to destroy your current district and zoning plan and put manufacturing throughout the city without regards to residential proximity whenever requested? If you approve the zoning change, the market value of our condo will no doubt go down, if for no other reason than it is next to a manufacturing facility. You should realize there will be increased truck traffic. Mr. Buzznardo, the CEO of Premier Manufacturing, is quoted, saying they expect in the future to make 1,200 units of a Nug Smasher a day, and this takes a lot of trucks to haul the raw material and finished product, with more noise, possible fumes, odors from welding stations, Bennett outside, and possible three work shifts in the future disrupting a peaceful evening. Where are the workers going to take their smoking breaks? Maybe along Swanson Avenue across from our condo like Kmart workers did. If you put a manufacturing business in downtown Lake Havasu City, you can forget about upgrading McCulloch Boulevard. Mr. Buzznardo, the CEO of Premier Manufacturing, paints a rosy picture of the future for Lake Havasu City having 60 to 80 employees within 12 months and as many as 129 in two years, with an increase to 250 within four years and moving the corporate office as well to Lake Havasu City. He also said these are highly-quality jobs with average salary of nearly $77,000 a year, paying what he pays in California, which is well above the rate, wage, wage rate in Lake Havasu City at the present. Do you really think this will happen with the state of the economy and the COVID-19 pandemic here for unknown time? This does sound mighty inviting to change the zoning to accommodate the requests of Mr. Buzznardo. What guarantees do you have all that all of this will happen? What if it does not happen? When you're considering this zoning change, please ask yourself, what if you owned a condo in Southwest Retreat? How would you vote? We hope you will read and discuss the contents of this email at your August 25th council meeting. Please do not approve this request for new zoning at the expense of all the condo owners across from the street from the building on Swanson Avenue. We thank all of you for taking the time to hear our point of view, and will appreciate a vote against the zoning change. Sincerely, Dawn and Fay Peterson.
This comment was submitted on August 20th, 2020. Please approve the zoning for the old Kmart building for light manufacturing. This will be great for our community. Brick and mortar stores are slowly going away, as evidenced by what is happening at the shops. You modified their zoning, please do the same for the old Kmart building.
This comment was received Thursday, August 20th. No subject line indicated. I strongly support the old Kmart location being rezoned for light industrial for the proposed tenant. I think it will be great for the city, creating new jobs. I live in the condo across the street from Barrel Cats.
Thank you. We had seven comments, this is our fifth one, just so you guys know where we're going.
This comment was received on August 24th, 2020, with the subject line of former Kmart building. Hi, my wife and I are owners of Unit A10 in the Woods Plaza, located at 1845 McCulloch Boulevard, Lake Havasu City. The Woods Plaza is located across the street from the former Kmart building. Please accept this email as our opposition to the rezoning of the building to accommodate the proposed light industrial use. This area surrounding the former Kmart building is made up of retail, service-oriented businesses, legal, medical, financial, insurance, real estate, and residential. There is no light manufacturing, nor should there be. Allowing the request for a rezone to light manufacturing certainly has the potential to significantly alter the makeup of businesses in the downtown area in the future. As I mentioned previously, an approval will open the door for other similar requests in the area. For example, what if Albertson's and/or Goodwill close their doors at their McCulloch Boulevard locations and no other similar tenants are available to locate in those spaces, which appears to be a justification for the rezone of the Kmart building? How would the city justify allowing the change to the former Kmart building and decline to approve similar changes at other locations on McCulloch Boulevard, including in the downtown area? The fact that the owners of the Kmart, former Kmart building cannot locate another big-box tenant does not justify a rezone. If the standard for determining whether a rezone is appropriate is a benefit to the existing property owner, a benefit to the proposed businesses, business at the location, and new jobs for Lake Havasu City, then there is no reason to have zoning in the first place, since these factors will be present in most commercial rezoning requests. If the building is no longer suitable for retail space, perhaps the owner should consider remodeling it or tearing it down and building a structure or structures that are more suitable for the current market. In addition, the fact that the proposed new business may not have another location suitable in Lake Havasu City or will not emit noise or odors does not justify a rezone. The problem with the rezoning request is that the nature of the proposed business is fundamentally different than the nature of the businesses that are currently in the surrounding area. Please accept this email as our request that the city council vote no on the requested rezone of the former Kmart building. Thank you. Submitted by Ken Moyer.
This comment was received Monday, August 24th, 2020, with the subject line, Kmart rezoning. Please add the following to the public record. I'm the owner of Suite A14 in the Woods Professional Building that is across the street from the former Kmart store. I am in opposition of the requested rezoning to manufacturing. There is no doubt that potentially adding hundreds of people to the workforce is enticing, but to what detriment? The surrounding businesses and residential homes do not fit the environment of a manufacturing zone. I understand the vacancies of commercial buildings, especially larger stores, is not good for our community. However, change in the current zoning is not the answer. Setting precedent for future rezoning applications for the downtown area is not in our best interests. I would also recommend that we abide by our general plan.
This comment was received on August 25th, 2020, with a subject line of item number Mike Calvici. Hello, my name is Mike Calvici, and I wanted to support, to voice my support in favor of PMG Manufacturing coming into the old Kmart building. I think they will be great for our community and bring many much-needed, high-paying jobs. I personally will benefit from this company because I will be applying for a job with them, and it could make or break my livelihood here in Havasu. I have a back injury, so I am very limited on the jobs that I have available to me. And PMG Manufacturing will have many jobs that I would qualify for, as well as many of our other residents will benefit as well. Please make the right decision and vote to approve the zoning change so PMG Manufacturing can come into our city. Thank you. Submitted by Mike Calvici.
Thank you. I believe that concludes the written comment that was received via email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov. Is there any additional comments from folks that are here in person before we close the public hearing?
My name is Mike Dagan. I'm a commercial real estate broker. I've been in Lake Havasu City 44 years. I've been in commercial real estate 40 years. These two gentlemen, Tom and John, are much older than me, and I'm much younger than them. And I've been here longer than they have, except John. You know, I've listened to everything tonight, and I'll tell you, I came in here with one thing on my mind. And then I changed my mind, and then I thought about it again. And I really think it comes down for me. What happens here is, does this council, and I appreciate the job you're all doing because I know it's difficult. Does this council decide to uphold their general plan? That's the number-one question for me. The second question is, do you want to open this door to other uses down the road? I think it's a great company. I wish they would come to Lake Havasu. I wish they would come to Lake Havasu no matter what. I welcome them to Lake Havasu City. I just don't welcome them to that site. But my own personal prerogative is because we own the Woods building across the street from it. We weren't notified properly like we're supposed to, as I talked to the mayor about this. But I'm letting that all go and I'm really here to just see how you want to act as our city council. That's the bottom line. Because it's not an easy choice what you're doing here tonight. And I'll be the first one to respect all of you for making that decision. But we really have to look at what we're doing now, five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road. That's what makes a really good city council. And thank you so much for letting me talk.
Thank you. Let's see if there's anyone else that would like to address the council on this matter before we...
Hello, Nancy Campbell, Lake Havasu City. Boy, have I learned a lot through this whole process. I think I feel like these guys, I was like absolutely 100%, whoa, I don't know. But I was the one that was stated a long time ago saying that this should have been a conditional use permit. I understand now that the code does not allow that. But what we're learning today is a lot of things are changed on a regular basis. I think conditional use permit zoning for this particular purpose would have been incredibly important to us. The reason why I believe that is as they, as she said, Lisa said, change is tough, you go first. This is a big change for us. If we would have put this in a conditional use permit where we had at least oversight as council every couple of years, and they mentioned, well, you wouldn't have had to go to council. Yes, you would have because in a conditional use permit, as we know, we can put in any condition we want moving forward, correct? So again, I have learned a whole lot through this process. I think that building is a lot bigger than people realize when you hear how many square feet Target wants and, you know, everything else. But I also believe that's a really bad location. I know downtown has worked very hard to improve what they're doing. I know there's retail and business and we have a new hospital going in and we have, what, colleges up the street that we've all donated a lot of money to. And I wouldn't want to be making this decision with you guys tonight. I'm sorry to say I'll be doing it with you in November, November on. But what I'd like to say is whatever we can do to change the zonings for these kind of businesses moving forward, where we have a little bit more conditional use would be really promising. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? All right, Rob, we'll give you just a few more minutes and then we'll have to wrap it up and we'll close the hearing.
Not a problem. I'm going to make this real quick. At my business, for the past two and a half weeks, I've had a survey. I've had 181 total people sign it. I made it very vague on purpose because I didn't want to try to influence people's decisions upon this survey. I basically told them that they want to rezone the building for manufacturing. Of the 181 total that signed it, 174 were against the rezoning. Seven were in favor. That's under 5%. I have a big cross section of customers at my store. They range on age from 40 on up, so it's a good demographic of this town. And if you, any of the council members want to see it, I have it here. I made a photocopy. I'll give it to you guys if you guys would like to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Does the council have any questions of staff or the applicant? If I may, Mr. Morris, if we could address the the general plan issue and in what that, you know, overall, the general plan's impact on this rezoning request?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and council members, thank you. Yes, the general plan designation for that area is commercial. Now, this is a rezone from a, from a commercial health district to a PD of commercial health district. So the, the property isn't actually rezoning its base underlying zoning district. It's adding a particular, particular use with conditions that could be approved or put on that property. So it was felt that this is a wash, if you will, for the general plan. The commercial use, the commercial general plan designation is typically for retail sales and things like that. But again, this zoning district is not changing. It's adding a particular use with conditions that may be approved by the city council. So it's kind of a push, if you will.
So the, the general plan supports this zoning change?
Yes, the way, the way it's been presented, the way it's written and the way it's perceived in this case, yes, the general plan supports. This is not in opposition and not against the general plan.
Okay. All right, council member or Vice Mayor Lane, do you have comments or thoughts?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I have some questions for the, for the applicant, if he can step forward. Thank you. Thank you for being here to, to address us tonight. I truly appreciate it. Here this last, this last week, I spent several days walking around that entire block, talking to all the different business owners. I also knocked on every door in the three complexes there, the different residents. And one of the things that I found extremely disconcerting and an issue that I had was people telling me, why are you here? We've talked to the people over there, this is a done deal already. They already have the city council in their back pocket. We've talked to those people and they said that this is a done deal. Was it your employees that have passed that word along or do you know where that came from? Because it made me talking to my constituents very, very difficult.
Sir, no, that was not me or anybody from my organization. I'm, you know, I understand the position that I'm in and I understand how the process works. And, you know, I, I understand it 100%. And all that I can say is I'm, I never would do anything like that, never would presume that done. I understand it. You know, I'm excited to bring jobs here to, to the city of Lake Havasu and I'm excited to bring advanced manufacturing. And I'm excited to make that facility a top notch facility. If you approve this tonight, that's what I'm excited to do. But no, sir, I would never be that presumptuous or anybody from my organization. That's discon, that's disconcerting to me as well.
Absolutely. And if it was just one person, I would think, okay, it's just somebody talking. But it was at least 10 people out of four different buildings. So I, I find it interesting that, that people think that. I mean, it's hard enough already when it comes to this kind of stuff. So if it wasn't you and your company, that's a good thing. But it, that was very disconcerting. It made it very difficult. You, have you yourself spoken with any of the current tenants? We have some of them here, these business owners, on what you might be able to do to mitigate their, their concerns?
I spoke with everybody that was at the, the public meeting and I'm available to speak to anybody anytime. I'm, you know, for retail and for the community. I make great neighbors and we're not looking to hurt anybody. And I respectfully disagree with a lot of the opinions tonight, but neither here nor there.
Okay, thank you. And I know this kind of came up, but one of the things that people were talking about is it was recently approved that on the November ballot, it looks like marijuana may be legalized here in the state of Arizona. And there's some concern amongst some of the residents that you will move part of your plant from manufacturing of your, your machine using robotics and move into some of the processing as well. You heard one of the comments where somebody obviously got a different point of view. Can you guarantee us that there's never going to be any type of marijuana processing inside that facility?
I can guarantee you that's, that's not what I do and that's nowhere in my wheelhouse or plans and anywhere in the future. So I manufacture products or not anything else.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may, Mr. Morris, could you address that from a zoning perspective? The guarantees are, we need real, real guarantees on, on that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. Yes, the city code zoning ordinance is pretty clear on separation and uses, locations for medical marijuana. If the state code changes, then that may require the city to update our codes for dealing with maybe what's not medical marijuana anymore, but recreational marijuana. So right now, our current zoning has separation requirements from different types of, you know, things that, locations that sell liquor, schools, residential areas, buffers are required. But if the state law changes, then most likely the city code will have to be amended to come into compliance with the state code. So the long term is a little more difficult. My crystal ball is a little hazy on that. But if the state code does end up changing, we'll most likely have to modify our local jurisdictional.
But because this is a PD, if, if this were to be approved this evening, it doesn't matter what state law does. The PD would not allow that activity?
Well, our, the current, we'd have to see what the state code says cities can or can't do. Once the state, if the state vote goes to legalize it. So I'm at a loss to tell. I can tell you right now, there are lots of checks and balances in place to regulate the location of medical marijuana. Off the top of my head, I don't think this would meet, given that there's residential just across the street. So I, without further consulting the zoning ordinance, I, I just don't, initially, I don't think it would, would be approvable as a location under our current regulations.
Okay.
I think we all, we all understand too. I just wanted to hear from him that he does a plan on it so it will put to rest the minds of the constituents. And then I can tell you there are, what I heard most. Yes, we absolutely want this business here. Absolutely. No, we absolutely don't want this business here. Three, yeah, we want it, but please go somewhere else. We have an industrial area. Go over there. Don't go here. And then the fourth one was, I don't care. It makes no difference to me. Who, what, who cares? So out of that, the one that you can address is, you did look at other buildings in town?
Yes, sir. I looked at all the buildings.
Some of the other locations that, that you may have looked at instead of not being able to do this? Or is that something that you'd rather not share?
I, I don't mind sharing it. I looked out at the, the mall locations out there. That would have been a rezoning as well, but I looked out there for just building wise, square footage facility. There's nothing that, there's nothing anywhere remotely the size of this building that I need. And I need 100,000 square foot for this next factory. That's a base minimum at what I set out looking for. So the other buildings that you have, like the Hastings building, I think it's a 20,000 square foot building. So these are very small buildings. And unfortunately, you know, we looked at the opportunity zone and everything else. I just don't have the affordability of waiting for years because of the market on our product. So, and I will add that these are all American patent products that we, we build here in, in our facilities. So, but anyway, if that, that helps, there isn't anything else here. There's nothing that fits a build here in Havasu.
Was there any thought of using this building on a temporary basis while you built another building? Or is that a cost prohibitive type of an issue?
It's, it's very cost prohibited. So the, the machinery cycle that comes in is on a five year cycle. So once you park that machinery, it's so expensive, it needs to be parked for five years. Now, it's, it's good machinery after five years, cycle life comes down 50%, but it has to be parked. So you can't move, there's a tremendous expense of moving the machinery in the operation. So, and, and the facility is a very nice facility. It would be crying shame to tear that asset down the middle of this town. It's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. That's all I had for questions. But I do have a statement if I may able to make it. And I will say, we all want this, this building to be a retail building. I think everybody in town would prefer that. I even think you would prefer that it was a retail building and you were able to go somewhere else. Unfortunately, it doesn't look like that's going to happen. You know, we sit up here, I consider myself the voice of the people. What is it that the people want us to do? You've heard it tonight. It's come through our emails. If you monitor social media, you see it on there. The city is split right down the middle. Half the people want it and half the people don't. So now, you know, it will be up to us on whether or not we're going to approve or disapprove this. We want it to be retail, if only we had the crystal ball and we knew what the future held. You know, if, if we say no, and six months from now, some other retail business wants to go in there, we look like the smartest people ever. If we say no, and nobody goes in there and that building sits empty for the next 10 years or four years, five years, like Hastings has done, it becomes a blight on the downtown area. So what this comes down to is, do we allow a light manufacturing business? According to what you have said, is not, it won't look like a manufacturing building. It'll still look like a retail building. Or do we pass on that and pass up jobs as well? This is going to be a very difficult decision for everybody up here. I have gone back and forth even tonight. I've spent time on the phone today with, with people that were concerned about this issue. We have commercial real estate agents here in town. Some that say absolutely you should do this and others that say absolutely you should not do this. This is our downtown area. This is our main street of town. Are you going to allow this? Why would you allow this? And to be quite honest, I'm still a little bit undecided. I won't know how I'm going to vote till I actually push the button because of this. And so whichever way it goes to whoever everybody feels, I wish everybody the best of luck. If it doesn't go your way, I hope you would consider looking for something else here in town. With that, I will conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Lynn?
Have there, have there been any permits that have been pulled? Because I thought I heard that. Have there been permits that have been pulled already?
There's been a permit pulled to enlarge the back door of the building. Only that's the only permit work that's been done there.
Okay, that's the only one?
That's it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If you could just say that to the microphone, Ryan.
That makes a difference. That makes a difference. And then...
So the building owners pulled a permit, just for those listening at home.
Okay. And then the second question, are there, and I don't know if you want to answer this. Are there negotiations of purchasing that building?
When you make a deal like this, there's always a future. But what's on the table for me right now is a, is a lease on the building. So I, you know, I always have a long term vision for the, for the property and the building. You always would when you do this type of deal, me personally. But, you know, as we sit right now, what's on the table is this zoning for the lease and the, and the, and the factory to get put in there. We're making such a tremendous investment putting the factory in there. We have to get that, that cash flow up and flowing.
Yeah, I'm just concerned for the, the business owners on the side there if something like that was to happen.
Can I address that really quick to give a little background just on lease to purchase builds? In a deal like this, the structure for a five year deal is five years is about $2.4 million for five years, just utilization of the space. When you're talking about leases this big, of course, there's options built in it because nobody's going to go in and invest in a facility where they're going to buy the facility, you know, five times over and, you know, however many years. So I think that that for clarity, that's what, what Ryan is referring to, that there's always down road strategies when the leases are quite large.
And I'm just concerned of what that looks like for the other businesses that are in there.
Gosh, I don't know how to answer that for you. I have no, nothing but wonderful intentions for all the businesses that are in there. And I'm sure with my retail experience, having built the fourth largest Honda dealership in the world, that I'll bring nothing but business to every one of the retailers that are in that shopping center. I mean, you know, we can talk about it, but I'm, you know, put my checkbook on the line too. I'm here with a whole bunch of millions of dollars to invest in this community to do that as well. So I'm willing to not only tell you, but I'm showing you as well. So if you approve this tonight, that's what we have on the table. So I'm not, that's great retail space that's there if you're asking the direct question. It needs more of it, you know, because we're reducing parking there. If you look at parking divisions and whatnot, but that's, you know, a conversation definitely for a later date. I think that there's great, great opportunity for that location and all of the businesses that are there. That's my feeling.
Can I have one last question? Was the, was there any comments from the county with the library? Any discussions? Did they have any issues?
There was none that I written saw. I can let James answer to that. I did talk to some people at the library and they had nothing but great things to say, so I...
I guess I'm kind of wanting to know from the county. Did we hear anything from the county itself?
We, we did not. We had five representatives of Mojave County come to the pre applicant meeting. They understood the process. They didn't see any opposition and they have not been vocal about it.
Yeah, interestingly enough, many, many years ago, that was retail that left and the library was something very similar to this. And, and I mean, just for perspective of what that will look like, Vice Mayor Lynn, I think you have a comment on that though as well.
Yeah, just to address Ms. Lynn. I went to the library because they're in that same shopping center. I went to the library because they're in that same shopping center, and I talked to the librarian there. She could not give me any comment because she is not the librarian. I left a stack of my business cards and I asked them to please pass it on to the county and have them contact me. They did not. Interestingly enough, three employees at the library did send me emails based on my cards being there, and all three were in favor.
Councilmember Koch?
I just have a brief comment. Having been through two election cycles in Lake Havasu City, the first one, the first two major concerns from our citizens were to get more higher paying jobs and diversify the economy. We went through Vision 2020, two major things that came out of that whole process. Diversifying the economy, creating higher paying jobs. Going into the last election cycle, put positional analysis on top of that, that was the top three things. So I've spent a number of years working with our businesses in Lake Havasu City in my former job. And it's tough. This is, and it's interesting, no matter what we talk about over the last nine years or so that I've been doing this, it's always, I want that, but I don't want it next door to me. I want that, we need that, but I don't want it in, in this area. We want it, we need it, but it's never convenient for everybody. So then coming down to the, what is, you can't have the outcome be more detrimental. It has to be more benefit, more beneficial. And it's, it's a tough call to make, it's, it's hard. And at the end of the day, we don't make everybody happy, but we do listen to everybody. And the emails, the phone calls, crazy. And you really have to do your homework on this and see how many people are affected. And I, I also want to say that I appreciate the people taking time to contact us on these issues. It really does help because when all you hear is one side of the story or one side of the position, it's very difficult to come up here and make a really good decision that you feel like you're representing a majority of the people. So I appreciate everyone who's reached out, your phone calls, your emails do matter. Whether or not it goes the way you wanted it to or not, know that your, your side was heard. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I, it's definitely, like I said, it's a great business and it's, it is, it's, I'm right on that fence. Because it's, you know, we get the opportunity to hear how amazing you are and the jobs we're going to bring. But we don't get the opportunity to hear about the next company that comes in. When, like I said, best case scenario, you guys are super successful, you build bigger. Or worst case, you know, you move out of town or something, it changes, and then the next person comes in. And, and we've opened that door to, you know, the precedents is, is my hardest question I can, I can ask here. I guess for James Gray, I mean, I respect your experience on this. I mean, what, what's your, what's your view on, you know, how, how does this put the city in the future for, you know, the next, the next question of a zoning change? Or, you know, and like I said, it is a zoning change, we keep calling it, not really a zoning change, it's a PD. But it still is that zoning change that, that I'm still literally right here trying to figure out which way I'm teetering on. So I guess, I guess here you're expecting, your, your perspective from the PED as far as how this affects us in the, in the future with precedents.
So I would answer that in two different ways. So if you, if you pass this planned development and say in five years, Ryan moves his company to Nevada for a better deal, those constraints still stand. So we could have an eight hundred person call center in there. We could, you know, there's a lot of things, as long as you're willing to operate one hundred percent inside, not make noxious fumes, not do anything that. If you can do that, pay the massive lease on a hundred thousand square feet and, and turn it into an employment center, that's a great thing. A lot of people have talked about how this building could be demisable. That's actually not true because of how deep it is and how the structure is. It's incredibly compli, complicated to split that building up. That's why they were only able to do it in the section so that they could. And then finally, I would say, not just COVID, but at going forward, we need to, when people have said to me, well, what, what happens if a grocery store goes down? Well, I think we need to be nimble. And I think that that's what happens for, for policymakers. We don't know that just the changes of grocery in the last three years here. We're not talking about Amazon or Whole Foods flying in, we're talking about how we consume groceries. We don't know that one competitor comes in and just says, well, we have fifty Sprinter vans outside and you don't get to come in our store, but you get to click it on your phone and we bring it to you, and that's still commerce. And they've figured out a better way to sort all the products that you need. I don't know that, but I know that when it comes, if it can pass the measures that we're talking about now, where to me, it really looks like, in my expertise, I think that you're gambling with a building that's going to sit there for a long time. And the, the main thing I can say is just the light bill of the Kmart would pay the full bill of Hastings. That's the difference of the size of this building, it's massive. So how many people can have enough wherewithal to get into this game and what can they use it for? It's not a lot of people. So if, if, if the council can live with the restrictions, then I think you have to be nimble in the environment you are. I think in the long term, I just don't believe that, well, they got to do it, so we all get to do it. I, I, I don't believe that. There's merits to every decision. So that probably skirted every question you wanted, but that would be my answer.
Just, also curious too, like return on investment, a lot of these properties, I mean, I imagine that building has paid its return on investment over a few times now. Is there other uses for it? I mean, I've seen anybody demolish the building and put up, you know, lower level retail with condos above. And, and, you know, we definitely have housing issues in Havasu. I mean, I could see that being a good, I mean, I guess, do we really truly think outside the box on something like that? I mean, like, because I do feel bad for the developer that, okay, you have this piece of property that now you can't do anything with. But, you know, there's a reason why, you know, even Walgreens has a land lease and thirty, forty year land lease. And then when they're done, they're done, and they've written it off and they move on and, you know. I mean, isn't this just the real estate cycle? I mean, I guess, is there, is there other options that we haven't?
Well, I mean, you could say it's a real estate cycle, but then you also have to look at the financial integrity of the center. That's something that I look at. I know that a lot of people look at it as like, well, we could just keep it empty. But I think about people like Rich and Dave. You know, when we went down through the strip mall, we had owners that said, if it wasn't for Rich and Dave, I would have been out of business in two thousand eight because they stepped up. They literally gave us free rent. Well, I think it's nice to think that the building's paid for, but they're in commercial development and that's not exactly how that game works. And so they're at risk. I mean, Rich and Dave are at risk. They, if you consider that they have twenty-two thousand square feet and they have maybe sixty percent of that filled, right? And now they have a hundred and one thousand square feet empty? I mean, I don't want to go any further because I don't like to talk about people's business, but it's at risk, you know? So it's, it's, that's a long game to say, I think we, if they just did this and they just did that. I think that we've come with an incredible client that's willing to put money up first, and he's willing to live within a constraint of a neighborhood, and I think that's powerful.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. On the precedent issue, I don't know if maybe Mr. Morris, you want to address, or I know, Ms. Gary, you and I spoke about it earlier. So maybe we'll start with Mr. Morris, and then Ms. Gary, you can say some comments on precedent. Zoning precedent issues, if we vote for this matter today, what does that do for future zoning matters?
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. Well, as we, as I outlined, this is a planned development. So each planned development is typically going to be unique in the set of circumstances it brings to the, the property. So this in and of itself doesn't necessarily set a precedent because this is a unique situation. If a different property in a different zoning district wanted to come forward and make an app, owner wanted to come forward and make an application for a planned development and asked for exceptions to other portions of the code, they would be treated on a case by case basis, same as we're treating this one. So if someone came in here and wanted to do some other type of business, we would review it the same way as we're reviewing this. So to say it sets a precedent, I, I don't think that's necessarily the case that if this gets approved here, it should be approved elsewhere. Because it's not the same situation where you go. And the, the stipulations or the, the situation that arises when each of those, if, if someone else came in, it was a different situation, and then different neighborhood, there could be different conditions placed on that to help mitigate any perceived conflict, any perceived disruption to the neighborhood. So as we were saying, set a precedent, I, I would say no, it wasn't necessarily set a precedent. It would be unique to each individual location if it came forward at a different location. Hopefully I'm explaining that okay.
Thank you. Yes, that's, that's good. Ms. Gary, I don't know if you have anything in addition to add to that?
Mayor and councilman, I think Mr. Morris did a great job answering the question. I would just throw it there, although it may not set a precedent where you would have to approve something that in the future, it definitely opens up an opportunity of something that isn't currently happening within Lake Havasu City. So you're, you're just opening the door, and we're not sure where that might lead, so that's just something to consider.
Thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Grohl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to ask Mr. Gray a question, if you might. Sir, thank you. It's because it's been a long time since I've been in the economic development business. Probably ten years since I was the CEO of Port Alberta. We had Canadian National, Canadian Pacific, PCL Construction, Pipeline, Air Cargo, Trucking, Logistics Companies, in addition to hotel developments, all next to Edmonton International Airport and the Foreign Trade Zone. But I got to see the other side of that where I sat on council, where I watched the city council drive business away. Now, I need to ask you a question because I'm, I'm thinking about this in a slightly different, probably way than many people will. We have about nineteen thousand one hundred acre feet of water rights here in this city. We use about fourteen thousand and change of that. The Bureau of Reclamation, if, anybody knows, it was like a hundred and sixteen degrees today, I did. So what's going to happen is very soon, that's going to be declared a shortage, and a certain percentage of that's going to get cut back. Even with all that water and no cutbacks. So maybe we'll have a big snowpack for the next five years straight, but I don't think so, I wouldn't bet on that. We're going to have less water rights. So even with all those water rights, which by the way are bottom of the line water rights, they're not at the front line, here's the reality. Total eighty-three, maybe eighty-five thousand people in this city. There's never going to be a hundred thousand people in Lake Havasu, it will never happen. There will be with tourists and stuff, but we will never have a hundred thousand permanent residents here. We don't have the water rights for it, and we can't afford to buy and compete with Phoenix and Las Vegas and Los Angeles for those water rights to purchase them. So that's just a hard, cold reality. Now, here's the question I need to ask from you, because like it's been a while since I've been in the economic development game. But when I was in it, when people would choose to build a hotel or a large corporate presence of some sort, whether it's manufacturing or anything else, big companies would use what we call site selectors. And those site selectors would have access to a lot of different demographic and site information. Now, I hear everybody say, oh, I want a Trader Joe's. You heard somebody tonight say, oh yeah, we, we talked to them. As soon as you get a hundred thousand people, you can be at the bottom of the list. Pretty much anybody who's going to want to take that space on, how many people in population are they going to demand, Mr. Gray? According to your knowledge of the current status of economic development and the market we're in?
Well, I think it's a, I think it's a twofold. I think that you're well over a hundred thousand. And I think as Rich and Dave and working with Jones Lang LaSalle guys, you're looking at a quarter million density of population. But here's the bigger thing I want you to think about. We're not just looking at making the mark. We're talking to people that are in scheduled retraction. Starbucks is closing four hundred stores. I mean, on every level, retail is in retraction to create density of the store uses they already have. They're optimizing an omni-channel. So that just further puts us at a lower list. And then the other, the other thing I would add from, from an economic development is even though that this is nuanced and it's an incredibly hard decision, there's no doubt, it's been discussed, it's right on the table. What I would say is we do have kind of the eyes on us right now in COVID with California. And right now, whether it's right or wrong in perception, it's going to seem like we had a great business opportunity and we elected to go the different way. That's hard in site selector world, in recruitment world. And to Councilmember Koch's point, we've worked tremendously hard with a lot of partners with ASU, with Mojave Community College, to get diversified skillsets, jobs, manufacturing, high leveraging profile companies that aren't on the margins, that are in, in a race to the bottom. The, the amount of technology that's being invested in here, that is why the Arizona Commerce Authority backed it and they sent you their letter. That's why Mojave Community College and the president said, this is the type of industry we want because we need to support it with education and we can get programs there. And I know that they've had brief conversations about how to create that for opportunities for people here. So in an economic development world, of course, this is what we've been working so hard for. Doesn't change how difficult your decision is, not at all. But from our perspective, that, that's why we're here tonight.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Gray. And I just want to leave a few thoughts here on the table. You know, I'm not going to be on this council after a couple of more meetings, I'm going to be gone. I don't even work in Lake Havasu anymore, I work in Kingman now. I still own a couple of properties here, but I have no iron in the fire, I have no axe to grind here. I have no interest, I, I make or lose not even a penny based on what happens here. And I've talked to a lot of people, but most of the people I've talked to have been average people, working class people. The kind of people who need these jobs. And, you know, I think it'd be crazy for us not to approve this and walk away from these kinds of jobs. Because my past experience tells me that when you do this, yeah, you do set a precedence. Site selectors don't want to look at you, people don't want to start coming to town to invest. You lose the opportunity to seize a chance to have these great high-tech jobs. And oh, by the way, building on an already existing base of high-technology manufacturing that exists in this city. This could actually change what I like to refer to as the final mile. We're at about fifty-five thousand? Right, you can do the math, it's not that many more people. The jobs we bring here, the kind of business we attract to this community now, will set the stage for what we will ultimately become. And if we choose to walk away from this opportunity, the odds are it's going to be more fast food restaurants. And it's good, nothing wrong with that, I like it, but it's going to be low-income jobs. It's not going to be high-tech, it's not going to be advanced manufacturing. It's not going to be jobs of the future that will allow our people to prosper. If, if there's any gift I could give the people of this city, it would be high-paying jobs like this with benefits. Good heavens, with benefits. That matters in a COVID-nineteen world. I know, by the way, it's that you're all clear, novel coronavirus will never, I repeat, it's that you're clear. It will never leave humanity, it will be with us forever. The question is, how will we deal with it? So keep that in mind.
Thank you. Ryan, I have a few questions, I'm going to get in the weeds with you for a minute. So just what makes Lake Havasu so special is what you're seeing right here, this public process. We're very engaged and we're really connected to our community. And, and so it might be overwhelming, like we're trying to welcome you to our city and we're like smothering you. But that's what we do, Kmart has been so special to us. And when it, when it left, it, it left a big void for us. And it's in the center of our, our downtown area and, and change is hard, and we've, we've heard that and, and we understand. But when we get to the weeds are, are things that citizens have said to us, and, and I've heard in the comments that our clerks have read and, and others. So signage, there was a mention on signage, what, what does your signage kind of look like overall for, for what PMG will use at this facility?
Signage wise, I, I had hoped just to have a PMG companies on the building in a nice signage. But like was mentioned earlier, I'd hope to have the overhang stacked stone and a real nice appearance for the overhang that's there. And honestly- And honestly, I can leave or take signage. I'm, you know, we do business through our e-commerce sites. So I can, you know.
We have good signage regulations, so I'm sure they'll be within the code. But it was mentioned, so I just want to.
You know, I think the pylon sign that's out on McCullough, the Kmart sign that's on McCullough, I would like to do the businesses that are there. I would like to advertise, utilize those. That'd been a thought that I'd had quite often. So I'd get our graphic guys if, if we could approve that through, if that's an approvable thing. But I'd like to bring more retail business in there for the signage because it doesn't, I'm not after signage. I'm after an advanced manufacturing facility inside. And I'd like to add, you know, as I've listened to all this, wholeheartedly want to thank all of you guys for the job that you do do because it's, it's very impressive. I have been involved with a lot of this stuff and it doesn't, it's not typically like this. So I do wholeheartedly appreciate the job and how serious you're taking this and the decision you do have to make here. So deeply respect that. And the other thing I wanted to say was, as I'm thinking of this, we haven't obviously put out for any jobs or anything else yet. We've got, this morning I checked with HR, we've got over 61 resumes, people that just from the newspaper articles that had turned in resumes for us. And then I checked with a switchboard. We had hundreds of inquiries with no postings yet. So I wanted to, as I was listening to all of this, I wanted to add those things in and.
Yeah, that's great. Could you talk a little bit, you know, Vice Mayor Lane had mentioned something about some of the comments on, or maybe somebody read it, one of the things, one of the letters, but about drug traffic or it's going to be a gateway to, to drug activity. You do nothing. It's just you manufacturing equipment. Is that correct?
Yeah, we manufacture machines. It'd be kind of like saying we make daiquiris, but we don't. We make the blender, if that makes sense. We make blenders and they're machines.
You'd mentioned several times during this hearing that you guys are a good neighbor. Can you just kind of describe what that means and looks like?
Well, I've always taken great pride in all of our properties. You know, I pride myself in being a business operator. You know, there's investors and builders and operators and I pride myself in being a great operator and I always make a good neighbor. My businesses are always first class in appearance and cleanliness. And I don't have neighbor problems. That's not what we do. It's not in our business plan. Our business plan is to be a great neighbor. We're always looking in ways to improve our assets and our property because we're there to improve assets, not like analogies was used of Walgreens taking a lease and using it. Well, we want to improve our assets over time, not depreciate our assets over time. So that's what I really meant. And, and we do create, you know, a lot of, a lot of great stuff for our people and, and the community typically in Gonsmore.
And then it was mentioned maybe by one of the, the people that spoke tonight about the culture of your company. Can you talk a little bit about that, that culture? About your employees and kind of what.
Culture is very important to myself and the company. We're, we hold integrity is first and foremost. We are hardworking people. This is in a, because we have robotics and whatnot. We don't work less. We work harder. And we, we are very productive in our, in our schedules and our job. But the culture overall, I would say, is we want to create a great work environment for our people. We want people, we want to promote longevity and we want, you know, the person to be there 20, 30 years from now and retire from us because we understand that the people are our biggest asset. It's where we spend the most amount of money is, is paychecks. And you can get a great residual from this team. And that's one of the things that is so exciting about this community is the team that we can build here in this community. I think they're great people that do great work like you guys are trying to do right here. I've been involved with a lot of city council and this, it's not, doesn't always go like this. So.
Excellent. And then the last item is something about the quantity with the increased demand for your product, that the trucking, somebody had mentioned that it's going to, was concerned, one of the neighbors, that we'd have more trucking than we had with the current use or something. If you could just address that?
I can even address it again if you'd like. Our products are expensive products. So when you get a truckload of products, it's, it's about $2.2 million, a 53-foot truckload. So this facility at 250 people should do about $5 million in product a month. So if you can kind of see, it's, that's, that's three trucks a month that is exporting product. Now, we don't always send full truckloads, so that's where the other trucks come in. But that's how that math works. It's all math in this business.
Perfect. All right. I'll get out of the weeds now. But I think we addressed all of the, the comments now between what other councilmembers have mentioned and what I had saw. Councilmember Dolan?
Kmart also had a lot of trucks. So I mean, not to worry about that. Like I said, anybody that knows me knows if I made up my mind by now, I would have already said so and said why. But we are, we are creating a precedent. But like I said, it is a big building that is unlike other buildings, which would be part of the precedent. I guess it's, and the big precedent to me is we're literally bringing, we can call it light industrial, but we're still bringing industrial to downtown, right off McCulloch, right across from the park, right across. I mean, we're still bringing industrial in. And my, and my concern is, is that we do lose that control. I mean, we create this, it's for you and whoever comes in after the fact. I guess my question is for Luke and for Kelly, what would it take for us to change the code to give council the ability to do conditional uses on situations just like this? Because if we are creating a precedent in the future where we're going to, might going to have to do this with other buildings and other buildings and maybe doing a PD isn't always the best thing, maybe a conditional use that we give them five years and if it's fine in five years, then we can do another five years where at least we have some sort of control rather than just, yep, it's industrial, we stamp it, well, light industrial and now we're, now we're locked into that. I guess that's for either Kelly or for Luke.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan, I'll jump in on that. Right now, for conditional use permit, that's something that goes to the commission only. So if it's a minor, if it's a minor conditional use, then that goes to staff. A major conditional use goes to the commission only for approval. So if, even if it was something that you, we decided to look at adding as a conditional use, that's something that only goes to planning and zoning. That means it would never come up city unless it maybe wasn't appealed part of a process. So that means all of the discussions that you're having today wouldn't happen at council. It would only happen at the commission. And I don't know that that's really the direction that you want to go.
And that's not a change we can make to make it to where it then goes to council if it meets certain criteria?
I don't know that you, I don't know that council wants to hear all the conditional use applications.
Well, anything over 100,000. Or 100,001 square feet, maybe.
I don't, I'm not, I guess I don't understand why we are hung up on the conditional use in comparison with the plan development. I mean, the plan development is very specific. Here's the plan that they have to abide by. Here are the conditions that they have to abide by. Even though you're rezoning it, somebody else could come in and look at, at doing that, but they have to fit that same mold. So there's, there's a protection there even with the plan development, even more so than, than anything else because they have to fit that exact mold. They want to change any aspect of it, they have to come back through the process and amend that plan development. So we're kind of, we're kind of hung up on this whole conditional use issue, but I don't, I don't think that's the issue. I, I really think we're accomplishing what needs to be done through the plan development, whether conditional use, plan development. The same protections or more protections are there with the plan development. If this is something that the council is interested in, in considering. If you're not interested in considering allowing that industrial, light industrial use in that area, then whether it's a plan development or conditional use permit, then you don't approve it either way.
Kelly, when I'm on TV like this, I wish you would agree with me when I ask questions. So thanks for that.
Not that I'm not agreeing with you.
No, thank you. Thank you for that insight. That does answer a lot of questions. Thank you.
Mayor and council, I'd like to echo Kelly's sentiments as well. I, I don't think the conditional use permit is the proper avenue here. I mean, given the fact that we've spent the better part of the last two hours discussing this item, it would suggest to me that it's more important that it's in the hands of the elected officials as opposed to, and with all due respect to my planning commission, as opposed to having it in the hands of laymen, I would much rather see the discussion and the decision made by the elected officials.
Thank you. Yeah, so. Yeah, so the, the comments with, as far as like getting back to the zoning issue that we're talking about today. So I think some people were concerned with PMG and if PMG were to leave and, and we would still have this, this PD on there if we voted in favor about this evening. But whatever would come back in with that zoning use, the protections that we're discussing tonight based on the recommendations and, and what we're talking about is whatever new entity moves in there or whatnot would be under the same zoning with these additional restrictions of no outdoor storage, no outdoor activity related to any manufacturing, no offensive odors outdoors created from activities within the building. And then the exterior of the building shall retain its retail appearance and the exterior changes should be approved by staff. So that's what we'd be committing to regardless. It was PMG or ABC or XYZ company. And, and as a counselor, are we, are we open to doing those, those types of things and allowing that use or not? So we got into the weeds tonight with all the details, which is important to do since it would be a potential new neighbor to us. But the, the real action in front of us comes before us with a six to one vote in favor with these four additional conditions from our Planning and Zoning Commission, which he did great work. I'm not sure if you all watched the, the video of that, but they also had a lengthy meeting of around three hours discussing that. So, so that's really the action that, that we have in front of us. You know, job creation is so important to, to many of us on this council. You're, you're bringing everything is the right thing for us. It checks every single box that we want Lake Havasu. And then you're like, what the location? And that's where, where we get going. But that's why we get paid the big bucks, right? And, and have to make, make the decision. So. Yeah, so with that being said, I'll take any, any final comments from council? Yeah. Any final comments from council or before maybe we entertain a motion? Councilmember McCoy, I don't know if you have any additional feedback or comments. I know you spoke earlier.
No, I, I think that we have covered this subject completely thoroughly. And, you know, we either close our eyes, hit one of, one of the other buttons or, you know, you just got to go with your gut for what you think's best for our city. So, thank you.
Yeah. Unless there's any additional comments or, or feedback from council, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, with great pleasure, I move that we accept this rezoning.
Yeah, if you could actually get the detail, I can share a suggested motion if that's what you're.
I could, but I'm looking at a Zoom image at the moment. Let's see. Scanning for signal.
Here's, Mr. Groth, here's a piece of paper. If it's the suggested motion you're looking for.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I move to adopt ordinance number 20-1241 for a plan development rezoning of track 2345, block one, lot one, from C-CHD, Commercial Health District to C-CHD/PD, Commercial Health District, Plan Development, Plan, yeah, Plan Development, and approving a general development plan to allow a use exception for light industrial uses, manufacturing at 1870 McCulloch Boulevard, including the conditions outlined in the ordinance.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Groth and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing them, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Mayor, aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Congratulations.
Wow. Talk about a sweater.
Yeah, for all of us. Yeah, for all of us. So we look forward to you being a good neighbor in our community and doing the right thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council for wholeheartedly your hard work. Really, really great, great deal. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, with those that are remaining in the council chambers, if, just by show of hands, if you can show me if you're here for item 8.5, if that's of interest to you? 8.6? Or 8.7? 8.7. Okay, so we're going to, if I don't have any objections from the council, we're going to move item 8.7 up to the next action item in interest of time. We're going to deal with all of the, the items this evening. So we'll now move on to item 8.7, which is adopt ordinance number 20-1240, rezoning a portion of APN 107-01-067, abutting Hogan Lane from Golf Course, Golf Course District to RE Residential Estates District to create a new residential lot from an unused portion of the Golf Course property. Mr. Morris, I hope I didn't throw you off by, by adjusting that, but in the interest of our citizens that have been waiting through, I would like to, to, to deal with 8.7, so.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. As planners, we roll with things. We can deal with it. That's right. This, this request is for a property, actually a portion of the Golf Course property. It's located on Hagan Lane. Here's an area map. Hogan Lane off of Akoma to Woods Lane and in the Hogan Lane. Here's a large version of the area. They're proposing to cut out a piece of about 26,000 square foot of the existing Golf Course property that's not being used at this point for the Golf Course. It is again on Hogan Lane. I'm not sure what the whole number is here, but I don't get on the Golf Course that much. And then here's the, the track map for the area and with the subject property outlined in red. So it's incomparable or a little larger in size to the existing lots in the area. Then we get to the zoning map, the current zoning map now. It's currently zoned, of course, Golf Course, but there's a little bit of a history here that goes into why it's currently zoned Golf Course with the rest of the Golf Course. In 2016, the city council adopted the current development code. Prior to that adoption, the Golf Course was zoned RE, just like the neighboring residential lots. Concern was expressed at that time regarding the impending sale and possible redevelopment of the course. As a result, the Golf Course designation was created, that zoning designation was created and applied to the Golf Course. So the Golf Course owners have, the current owners have made some changes and they have, in addition to these proposed, creating this proposed new residential RE zoned property, they've sold off portions of the Golf Course strips to adjacent property owners that are zoned RE. They're, one of the other items is part of the reason for that. So we're in, we're at this point because the properties are currently zoned Golf Course and it gave the city council the time that it would give the, give the public and the property owners more of an input on whether, to change or rezone the Golf Course to something else. I believe the fear at that point was the Golf Course would be sold to someone else who would come in and just rezone it all to get rid of, totally get rid of the Golf Course and rezone it all and make lots out of it, is my understanding. So at this point, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item at their meeting in July and they voted by a vote of five to two to deny the request for the rezone based on concerns they had for possible impacts on the neighborhood. Based on, again, that was a COVID meeting, so there was no public available at the meeting, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, but there were a number of, a couple, three of emails that were sent in as letters of objection to the rezone for the property. So at this point, they're just asking that it be rezoned from RE, excuse me, from Golf Course to RE to allow a development of a residential lot at the property. And I believe that the applicants on the, in the, in the audience too, if you'd like to make a presentation also. Thank you.
Thank you. But does the applicant want to make a presentation or say any, anything?
Mr. Mayor, councilmen, staff, thank you. My name's Lee Johnson. I'm with APL Surveying. I'm representing the Golf Course owners here. The Golf Course owners are also in the audience for questions later. On this property, we are creating one residential lot out of the Golf Course zone in this area. I did have some questions asked of me and also read comments in the paper. And some of those I'd like to address before I take your guys' questions. One that was in the paper was about the narrative. questions. One that was in the paper was about the narrowness of the street. Hey Luke, can you pull back up the track map for me real quick? Most of the cul-de-sacs in town, city standard width of a cul-de-sac, 50 feet wide, and that's probably for 95% to 98% of the cul-de-sacs in town, with 24 feet of asphalt. This one here is an oddity. This one's 60 feet wide. This one's wider than any of the other cul-de-sacs in town. This one has already been widened, curbed. So instead of your standard 24-foot wide asphalt, this one's been widened, curved, and it's probably about 33 feet wide across. So the street's not narrow compared to any other cul-de-sac in town. This particular area of the golf course is desert. It's non-functioning part of the golf course, and that's why we looked at this particular location for it because it did have public right-of-way access and just basically a unused part of the golf course. We did meet with the owners, surrounding owners, talked to probably five of the surrounding owners at two different meetings, tried to address their concerns, talked to them. A lot of their concerns were about the view. Most of their view concerns, if you have the picture up there on your guys' screen, I can't see what you've got on your screen.
We have the same thing.
You've got the same thing, okay.
Yes.
Are the homes that are on the opposite side of Hogan, which actually back to the golf course also. So they have golf course on the back of their lots and then across the public right-of-way on the opposite side. And that was their major concern. We tried to tell them that, you know, we've created this lot as a bigger lot where a nice home can go in there. It's not gonna try to go in there and put in something small and devalue their house. It's a bigger lot where they can put a nice home and bring more value to the neighborhood. That's basically what I've got to say about it. So if any of you guys got direct questions for me, I'll take them. And then I know that the owners would like to hear any questions. You have two after the public comment.
Excellent. Are there any questions initially of council? Councilmember Dolan?
I guess just a question, just something I learned, and I had reached out to Dan because I had concerns, questioned, and I went through some of the emails that we received in our packet. And I guess what I thought was interesting was that the golf course can put in condos there without permission from the council, but so this is in lieu of condos, I guess, or?
Well, let me correct you on one thing. Not condos. Condos are for sale. They could put in like a vacation golf rental for people to be able to come in and stay for the weekend or the week or whatever and sit up that on the golf course property. That is part of one of the accessory uses that is permitted in the table, along with hotels, motels, all that is allowed, along with anything in the resort-related type of uses.
And just double check with me. So they can do that right now based on, without any code change?
Well, if you don't mind, we have a slide here that has all the different uses that are allowed.
Okay. I was just curious, because I just found that very interesting, that if it's allowed, then it, I guess, you're answering the question?
Yeah, there are no single-family, no residential, typical residential uses allowed.
Yeah.
But there are some accessory uses like clubs and lodges, community centers, daycare. A golf course is permitted by right, actually, in the golf course zoning. Office space, park, or playground, utility, minor, public utility, telecommunications facility as an accessory use. And then we get to the more commercial uses, nightclub, restaurant, bar nightclub, restaurant, hotels, conference facilities, resorts. I think that's what he's alluding to as an accessory use. And then indoor recreation, outdoor recreation, entertainment, alcohol beverage sales, those are all allowed as accessory uses for a golf course. And then other accessory uses like ATMs and caretakers quarters, things like that, that are more applicable for most of all the other types of zoning. But yes, basically what he's saying, it does allow. Thank you.
That way the golfers can stop as they go through, right?
Yeah, when you lose all your money betting. Thank you. I just found that interesting. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly with the code. Thank you.
Very interesting. Yeah. Vice Mayor Lynn, do you have a comment on that?
I think the intent of that wasn't so that they could put that in the middle of the golf course, but so that they could have those amenities at the clubhouse. And that's kind of thing, not here. And I'll say, I went out, I walked around that piece of property. I knocked on all those doors and talked to those people there. They're not happy about it. There was one lady, I don't care. Doesn't matter to me. I can watch my husband golf behind the house. I don't have to watch him in front. The one thing I thought was very, very interesting was the amount of golf balls that were in everybody's yard and in the street and in that property. And I think that if you build a house there, you're gonna be having a whole lot of problems with golf balls if you don't have netting all the way around that house. Because every house along there, that seems to be an area where people sliced their golf balls quite a bit. So, and yeah, but I will tell you that the people over there are not happy about it.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Mr. Morris, if you could talk a little bit about why this is coming to us with a five to two in opposition to the rezoning request. Many of us watched the video from the P&amp;Z, but just if you could summarize it for those at home.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. As you saw at the planning commission meeting, there were three items that were similar to this one. There was one where backyard rezones, where portions of properties, abutting residentially zoned properties were purchased from the golf course, and they're asking that those little slivers be added or zoned the same as the residential home back to RE zoning. And then there was another one, very similar to this, at the end of a cul-de-sac with a new lot carved out from golf course property. The Planning and Zoning Commission didn't have any issues with that. They approved that one 7-0, recommended approval on that. This one had some opposition from the neighbors that was read into the record, and based on the, based on the concerns of the neighbors that were expressed in those documents, they felt less comfortable approving it, obviously, by, they recommended denial, send it to the City Council with a recommendation of denial by a vote of five to two, based on what they were hearing from the letters that they received. And those were, objections were basically, they were concerned about traffic, they were concerned about blocking views they felt would reduce the value of their property because of the blocking of the view of the golf course. And based on those concerns, it seemed the planning commission didn't want to recommend approval of that, even though they'd recommended on the earlier one because there wasn't as much concern. There wasn't anything really expressed on that other case to rezone it. So basically, it came down to the neighborhood wasn't happy with it, the neighbors they heard from weren't happy with it, so they were recommending denial.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right. Thank you, Lee. Well, we'll open the public hearing.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes. So would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Just make your way to the podium and state your name. We did get, we have received several written comments, so does anyone want to initially speak? And if not, then we'll start with Ms. Williams to start the written comment. There's five received for this item.
This comment was submitted on August 18, 2020, with a subject line of proposed rezoning Lake Havasu Golf Club. City council members, first of all, the golf course owners didn't decide to do this just willy-nilly. They sat down and tried to find a way to maximize their profit, yet they say they just want to make a little extra money for sand traps. My wife and I have been saving money for 20 years to get a place on the golf course with our eye on this particular location. We figured this was the perfect location with the open views from the backyard and side yards. Obviously, the golf course owners thought the same thing and decided to steal our optimum location. When we purchased the property, we figured it had the greatest views on the entire golf course, 180 degrees out the back and side doors, until the owners decided to ruin all of that. A perfect east and west sunrise and sunset. Between the new home to the east and the Lake Havasu Golf Club plopping down a piece of property fully contiguous to our property, they would be effectively cutting down our view down to about 50 degrees. This was purposely planned to steal our view and our lot value and should not be allowed in any way. These people need to be taught that you cannot come in and ruin somebody's property for no reason other than to pad their pocketbooks. When the original, when the owner originally came to us and requested a lot line adjustment just to reflect the small end of our lot, we certainly didn't expect a 2,500-square-foot two-story house that would completely ruin our view. He said it would only be 10 or 15 feet of ornamental landscaping to improve the look of the golf course, and obvious roots just to test the water. We specifically told him that if he wanted to put some kind of cart path or thoroughfare through there, we wouldn't do it. When we received his actual plans for putting a residence there, we were so flabbergasted that we didn't even respond. Shortly after that, we received a letter from the surveyors that he was trying to get it rezoned to accommodate this house. We couldn't believe that he would go to such lengths. We consider him to be highly unethical and less than honest. For the above mentioned and many other reasons, we patently object to the rezoning being granted, which has already been disapproved through the wisdom of the planning commission. Please understand that if the rezoning goes through, it will be met with legal action from all sides, including 15 current affected houses in the neighborhood. I would like to finish by saying that when Mr. Gilbert found out it would be met with legal challenges, his response was, bring it on. He doesn't exactly sound like a concerned businessman, more like a bully thinking he can push around individual landowners within the residential estates. We certainly hope that you are able to see our concerns and will do what is right for the individual landowners and not a big business. Thank you for listening and your attention to this matter, submitted by James and Caitlin Lintern. And there was also an image that was attached that's provided to you in the packet with that statement.
Thank you.
This comment was received on Monday, August 24, 2020, with a subject line, Opposition Letter, LHC, City Council Meeting Agenda Item 20-2481. Dear City Clerk, please be sure that my highlighted narrative below is read aloud during the pre-vote discussion of this agenda item 20-2481 at the City Council meeting tomorrow evening, August 25, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Dear sirs and madams, I am writing to express my opposition to this proposed zoning change, Agenda Item 20-2481, and to ask the City Council to reject it. Other members of the community who share my position will be writing you and presenting an extensive list of zoning use and emergency services access issues that support the rejection of this change, so I'll skip reiterating them and make my comments short. A number of homes have been built on my street since I purchased my home, all of them, including the one immediately to the south of mine, have been built on lots that I clearly knew were approximately zones for RE development. I understand the rules and had new issues. This proposed rezoning changes these rules, devaluates adjacent homes, alters the character of the neighborhood, and diminishes its openness and tranquility. I believe zoning changes should only occur when there's a compelling reason for the public good. The golf club would have us believe that this zoning change meets that criterion and that the development proceeds will be used to upgrade other parts of their facility. Nonsense. Improving other parts of their private facility does nothing for the public good. It has only to do with increasing profits for the golf club. This should not be done at the expense of myself and my neighbors. Unlike myself, I know that the golf club partners have deep roots in the community and considerable local political influence. Please don't let this sway you into changing the rules for this sole enrichment, vote to reject this rezoning application. Thank you, Ellen Walsh.
Thank you.
This comment was received on Monday, August 24, 2020, with a subject line of Meeting ID 20-2481. Dear Mr. Kalshihi and City Councilors, good day to you. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to voice our concerns with the rezoning plan. We reside on Hogan Lane for the past three years. We've enjoyed living in our home in this very special location and beautiful golf course community, full of warm and cordial people. We were attracted to this lot mainly because of its unique location with unobstructed view of the golf course in the front of our house and back. We knew that it is going to be the view that we will forever enjoy because it was zoned for golf course. We are opposing this rezoning due to the increase in traffic in a narrow street and devaluation of our house with the obstruction of the view of the golf course. As we look forward to living at our current home for many years, we look forward to continue to enjoy the view as it is currently, unobstructed views in the front and back, the unique location that we have always wanted, the main reason we got this lot, even if it cost us dearly. Most importantly, we are concerned that allowing rezoning can also always lead to future rezoning of the golf course when favorable opportunity for the owners arises, which can affect and negatively impact all of the golf course residents. Therefore, we strongly oppose to this rezoning. We just want to let you, we just want to let you be aware that a couple weeks ago, I, Rick, had the opportunity to meet with the two owners as they requested me to meet with them. At our discussion, Jeff stated that he can do anything they would want to do to the golf course because they own it. He added that they have a good lawyer. This statement was not appropriate and it intended to intimidate me. I understand that they are owners, but I don't believe that it is proper that they can do any transformation they want that entails rezoning without the golf course homeowner's approval. Our neighborhood research group came across this Lake Havasu City Development Code 14.01.02. I believe this code supports our position to keep our neighborhood in pristine condition as it was originally zoned. Highlighted sections that were provided, Lake Havasu City Development Code 14.01.02, purpose, letter C, maintain and protect the value of property, letter D, further the development of business and tourism industries, letter E, conserve and protect the open space, scenic beauty, and other natural resources of the city while also promoting recreational land uses, letter F, protect the character and social and economic stability of residential, commercial, and industrial areas, and letter G, assist in maintaining a high quality of life without causing unduly high public or private costs for development or unduly restricting private enterprise, initiative, or innovation in design. We truly appreciate if you heartily consider our thoughts and concern on this matter. This rezoning issue is very deeply concerning to us as it can set up future uncertainties as to the changes that may happen with another rezoning. We strongly oppose to this rezoning. We hope you understand our situation and our concern. Thank you very much. Sincerely, submitted by Rick Rains and Heidi Burden.
Thank you.
This letter was received Monday, August 24, 2020, with a subject line ID 20-2481. Dear sirs and madams, we understand the undersigned homeowners that are impacted by the application for rezoning GCs to REs, REs, as you hear our concerns about the effect these additional developments, in particular 24-81, will have on our neighborhood. The issues are numerous and complex, and this proposed rezoning will irreversibly and permanently influence our wonderful neighborhood and properties. In the Arizona Constitution, Proposition 207, 2006, provides that a property owner is entitled to just compensation if the value of a person's property is reduced by the enactment of a land use law, defined as a law that regulates the use or division of land, such as municipal zoning laws. In this case, it is not the government that has taken the land or changed the use, but a business, the result being the same loss of value to our homes. When the RE homeowners invested it, was certainly with the understanding that the neighborhood was established. They paid a premium because of the unique qualities of the RE, open- They paid a premium because of the unique qualities of the RE, open spaces, view corridors, varied wildlife, and other attributes. The damage caused by the impact of this rezoning will to be, will be to property values to financially benefit the applicant. It is obvious that there will be a change in character and overall density of the RE neighborhood. The claim that adding more residential density is a benefit for existing property owners is pure speculation and advantageous to those who seek rezoning in order to maximize the sales value of the properties they plan to sell. Rezoning or inventing lots in an established area does not create new it adversely affects the existing. If successful, our neighborhood will suffer the consequences. In two thousand sixteen, Lake Havasu created the GC zoning code. As we understand, this change was made to prevent a developer from buying the golf course and redeveloping it. It was evident that the city officials, as well as the residents, value the vision of the city's founders. The attraction to low density and open space with abundance of recreation uses in one of the first tracks of the city's history, not additional lots invented and crammed in wherever possible. We believe this is occurring today with the only difference being it is not happening on a large scale, which would be more evident, but one at a time. If this is approved, the aftermath is yet to be seen. The general purpose of zoning law is to guarantee to an investor that their values in development will not have to endure future attacks in the standards for, for when they are invested. Protection of their asset is enshrined in local zoning laws, which are guaranteeing the infrastructure is appropriate and orderly for perpetu, to perpetuit, to change in a zone to create lots here and there is antithetical to this concept. In addition to financial concerns, we are most disturbed by the safety factor. The approval of the request would add a residential lot to an already dense cul-de-sac, which currently is well beyond the four hundred feet of the general street design standards, as well as the thirty-six-foot road surface minimum. We also understand the city regulate the number of homes on a cul-de-sac. The property in question is on a street that is more than fifty-four hundred feet long and has sixty-five existing homes. We believe the city has these numbers in place because they deem this as an important fire and safety issue, which, which supports our position that adding density does not make sense. The narrow street, the length of the cul-de-sac, the number of homes, and most importantly, the fact that there is only one entrance is a safety concern, not just a property, but also of lives. We would also hope that any person who has interests is affiliated either directly or via business entities, or investors, or have any other associations recuse themselves from the decision-making for this application. We leave you with this. Lake Havasu City Development Code fourteen dot zero-one dot zero-two, purpose in the highlighted areas is such. Code is adopted to protect and to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of residents, and preserve and enhance the aesthetic quality of the city. Highlighted item C, maintain and protect the value of property. Number D, further the development of business and tourism industries. E, conserve and protect the open space, scenic beauty, and other natural resources of the city while also promoting recreational land uses. F, protect the character and social and economic stability of residential, commercial, and industrial areas. And G, assist in maintaining a high quality of life without causing unduly high public or private costs for development or unduly restricting private enterprise, initiative, or innovation in design. Thank you for your attention. Beck Bushnell, Gordon White, Michael and Anna Maria McCarty, Adria Molina, Ellen Walz, Rick Reyes, Heidi Burden, James and Caitlin Lintern, Alan and Bonnie Halverson, Larry and Cheryl Yarborough, Yarborough, Sam and Olita Jimenez. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have one more written comment.
This comment was received on August twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty with a subject line of ID Two Zero Dash Two Four Eight One. Dear Sirs and Madams, I am writing to address my opposition and concerns over the proposed rezoning of the lot on Hogan Lane. I live above the proposed lot on Lima Drive. For the past couple of years, I have been watching the area deteriorate. I wondered why the area wasn't being watered or cared for. The previously healthy trees started dying. What had once been green and flourishing slowly turned to dirt. Then the trees began to be taken down, even the healthy ones. I couldn't quite comprehend why the once beautiful landscape was being so neglected. Then the surveyors came and I understood. I had been part of the opposition group to the rezoning the entire golf course in two thousand sixteen. At that time, it was decided keep the area's own golf course not changed to residential estates. This particular area has been referred to as unused or scrappy. It was never until it was neglect, it was never, it never was until it was neglected. This piece of land has been groomed to develop a residential lot. It extends halfway across the golf course width in that area. This lot has a huge footprint, nearly twice the size of most in the adjacent area. There was also an attempt to trade land from one of the other residents in order to make this an even larger lot. My concern is the precedent this sets for the future if this is approved. What is to stop the owners of the golf course from not watering other areas, removing trees, landscaping, and asking to develop those as well? Instead of getting the entire zoning changed at once, it could be done incrementally, one lot at a time. I have witnessed this being done in the case. Please refer to photos. Those were provided to you today at your seat. The current owners purchased a golf course, not a housing development. If they are allowed to chip away and encroach into the golf course, what is the purpose of the zoning designation? Again, this proposed lot extends halfway across the existing course. This is not the case of adding a few feet off the back of an existing developed lot. I have no opposition to those proposals. I ask respectfully that you deny the request for rezoning. Thank you, submitted by Beck Bushnell.
Thank you. That concludes the written comments. Would anyone in the audience, just please make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
I apologize. I know it's been a long day and I missed my cue to come up here.
Oh, no, yeah, you're fine. Yeah, we're still in the public hearing.
Okay. My name is Anna Maria McCarty, and I am one of the homeowners at twenty-three forty-three Hogan Lane. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the application for rezoning ID Twenty Twenty Four Eight One, which is quite different than ID Twenty Twenty Four Seventy-eight, which is GC land purchased already by homeowners adding to their established lots, and ID Twenty Twenty Four Eighty, which is creating a new lot on a cul-de-sac, which has various access or egress points from Jamaica as well as from Tacoma. We have heard various analytical and code comments, and now, if I may, I'd like to give you a personal one because I believe it is important as a base. My family's first trip to Lake Havasu was the summer of nineteen seventy-two. My siblings and I could not understand why my parents planned a family vacation to a little city in the middle of the desert, even if it did have a lake and a bridge. That one summer was all that it took for us to realize what a truly special place Lake Havasu was. We made incredible memories through our childhood and into our adulthood, all while seeing our city grow. We bought land, then a condo, and another, and finally a home. Three years ago, we decided to try and find a home in our dream location, the RE at the Lake Havasu Golf Course. We found one within our budget, and all it took was one visit. Oddly enough, I had seen this house on the market in two thousand eight-eight, so I took that as a sign. The, the house did not have much of a view off the back, but the front view made up for it. We did our due diligence. We researched with our realtor, the actual golf course at that time, and the planning and zoning department, where we were consistently told that a home could not be built on that land because it was zoned GC. I would imagine that the golf course researched, the owners researched, when they went to buy the golf course, and they knew that that was zoned as a GC. So, to our surprise, when we saw the application to rezon from GC to RE, we were mystified. After several attempts, we were able to schedule a meeting with the golf course owners and the surveying company. At said meeting was my sister, my husband, a neighbor, and myself. The dialogue of that meeting left me feeling disheartened and a bit intimidating. We shared our concerns with some of the replies being, and I'm paraphrasing, "It is our land. We can do whatever we want. Be glad that all we want to do is put a house and not a stay-and-play, a maintenance building, or something else. Why would you want to look at these cacti instead of a beautiful house?" The two that touched me the most were when I said, "I enjoyed the view in the morning while having my coffee on my front patio, and if there was a house there, I could not do so," to which I was told, "Walk to the middle of the street, and instead of looking forward, look to the right." And lastly, "We invest back into the golf course. We don't need to do this. This is just a hobby for us." To which my reply was, "This is not a hobby to us. This is our home." While there are the basic concerns, such as safety emergency issues related to the addition of another residential lot on a one-entry cul-de-sac that is already beyond the four hundred feet recommended, the risk is of, not only of property, but also of life, of life if there is an emergency and a vehicle needs to get in there. I will add the emotions of a dream that you worked hard and long to realize, to have it fade away for someone else's hobby. This matter for my family ends tonight with your vote. We would hope that anyone with any affiliation in business or otherwise would recuse themselves from the vote. Whatever the outcome be, I hold no remorse. If in the golf course's favor, I wish them success, especially if it's in the city's benefit. If in the homeowner's favors, I would hope that there would also be no ill feelings. This is really hard for me to, I've never done this before, to come up here and try to get all my thoughts together and try to do this without becoming emotional. So I appreciate, I know it's been a long day, and appreciate your attention to this matter, and I am one of the homeowners that's directly impacted by this. I have probably the smallest lot, but a house that is full of love, and it's taken us a long time to get here. Our backyard is very small, and our front yard is where that new house or that new property will be. I think there's a lot of other areas that this can be done. I think progress is great, but not at the expense of other people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Yeah, yeah, do you want to speak as the applicant, or do you? Yeah, you, yeah, you can come on up if you want to talk, or does anyone else that wants to before we close the public hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and Ms. Reste, if you want to make, Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Wow, we're not bad people, and some of the stuff that I've heard is, it is what it is. Not even close. And I'm, like, like I said in the meeting, we're not trying to hurt anybody here. We're trying to make, make something good in Havasu for this golf course. We spent over a million and a half dollars so far of our money. We, we don't take a dime. We have three years, we have not taken a dime from this golf course.
Yeah, Ms. Reste, if you could just make your comments to the council, I'm sorry. Yeah, at this time, you're, you're addressing the council. Thank you.
So, you got to hear from, from day one. Anna did put letters in every house around there in their mailboxes. The gentleman over here in the corner, maybe you can point up there, sent a letter to the, to the city, no, over to the right.
Yeah.
Yes. Saying that he's going to sue us for ten million and the city for ten million. That's just, Jeff and I were flabbergasted. We didn't come out here, we set a goal when we first bought this golf course to, to inject everything back what it needed. We have spent over a million and a half dollars. We have, some of the stuff that we've done, set bunkers, we just finished our sixty-eighth bunker, we've done twenty-eight cart paths. The gentleman here, James, the one who says he wants to sue us for ten million, we have a cart path. It comes, going to go this way. Why would we even bring up a cart path? So, some of this stuff is not making sense. We, we don't want enemies. We, we are spending, we're here spending our heart and soul. I've been a member at that golf course for twenty-five years. I've been, I've watched it go from great to terrible. And if you guys can't see when you're driving through what we have done, all the stuff that we have put, that's our, that's the money that we have raised by selling ten-foot here, eight-foot here, four-foot here. That's what we have done, and we're not trying to make enemies to our, our neighbors. We're not. We're trying to get our clubhouse up, you know, for some fine dining and weddings and so forth. That's the stuff that we're trying to raise the money for. We're not, we're not bad people, and, you know, some of the stuff that I've heard of comments that are so incorrect, it just makes me mad, and, you know, I'm not that type of person. We, we have our heart and soul into this. We, he's very successful, I'm very successful, got this golf course, is going to be successful with us as a partnership. You know, it just, it's disheartening to hear some of this stuff, and, and once again, I just want you to, if somebody threatens you with a ten-million-dollar lawsuit, what are you going to do? You're going to call your lawyer. It's as simple as that, and that's what we did, and that's what I was, I was the one who explained it to Anna, that this gentleman wants to sue us for ten million, and we did call our lawyers and said, and Jeff said, "Bring it on." I mean, what, what else would we do? You know, and it's not being arrogant, it's about a point of, we got threatened, you know, by a ten-million-dollar lawsuit, and it, and it's terrible that it had to get to that point. We offered to sit down with everybody. We didn't shut off, trust me, I know, I'm the managing partner, so I know everything what we've spent in, in fertilizer, but we've had, ma'am, whoever wrote that letter, we've had over forty-six pines that are dead because of fungi, okay? We have cut them down, not healthy trees. The only healthy trees we've cut down is two, it was because, it was on hole fourteen, and the, the owner of the property said it went into their, and if they wanted to pay for it, they could pay for it to take it down. We don't go and cut healthy trees down, okay? We have planted over eighty-six trees out there. They're fifty-four years old, they're, they have a disease. You can call the doctor, what's on hole two? On hole two, she's, she's told me that they're, they're diseased, you need to cut them all down. We don't, we didn't go shut the, the water off just because we were going to sell this property, you know? We didn't do that, and when people are saying that we did that, it's disheartening because that's not me. It's not me. Those trees were dying, they're all, my house on hole two, they're dying. I can take you out right now. We have water to them, they're dying, okay? We are replenishing them as we go. We're going to plant another sixty-some trees this, this year. And once again, it's, my partner, I've known him for a long time. He's a good guy, I'm a good guy. We're not here to stronghold Rick because of a lawyer. We made a comment. The comment was, somebody threatened us with a lawsuit and over something stupid. It could have been talked out, you know? We don't want to be like, you know, we don't want enemies on the golf course. We've, we've done too much and came too far, and the last thing I want to say is devalue. I'm so tired of hearing devalue. We're going to sell that lot for four hundred thousand dollars, okay? And it didn't get across to anybody when we met with the five people, that if we're going to sell it for four hundred thousand dollars, we're not going to take a penny less, right? You're not going to come and put a trailer on a four hundred thousand dollar. How could that devalue your property, right? Think about that. It can't, I've been in business a long time, it can't, it's not going to devalue your, your property. When you look at those houses, and, and, Anna, I'm not trying to be mean, I'm not, but what, like I said, when we met with you, you're looking at dirt, okay? You can't see the back of the green. The fourth green is up above where it says "Subject." You can't see there, you can barely see down this side, and you can't see the tee box, okay? The tee box is about thirty-seven feet, right? We have a thirty-foot limit, right, right? Look, I, I don't know this one. Luke, I don't know this, but I'm going to ask you a question. I heard about all these codes that we're breaking. I was told that we did everything unethical. We went through all the proper channels to do this. We didn't just make this up. We went through the city process to do all this stuff. Are we breaking any codes? And that's, I guess that's my big question because everybody's reading these codes that we're breaking, but I don't know what we're breaking. Are we breaking any codes?
Yeah, Mr. Morris, if you want to answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. Essie. You're going through the proper processes to create this lot. The first step is getting the property properly zoned to allow residential property, and you're doing that now. The next step, assuming it gets approved, or if it does get approved, is to go through the lot split alteration, lot alteration process to carve that lot out as it, so it meets the zoning that you're, matches the zoning outline that you're proposing for it.
Right.
And then it's created as a residential RE lot. There were references to maximum lengths of cul-de-sacs and things like that. Obviously, this particular cul-de-sac was not designed under our current subdivision regulations. The current subdivision regulations probably would not allow a cul-de-sac like this without other means of egress. And as far as street widths, this street right-of-way here, I'll go to the previous slide or this slide. That Hogan Lane with, street right-of-way width is 60 feet wide, which is standard for a street right-of-way. The pavement there, I believe, is about 30 feet wide, which is pretty standard for, again, that side of the street. In some areas of town, on cul-de-sacs, there are 24 feet of pavement or so, give or take. So the claim that this is illegal or this cul-de-sac shouldn't exist, I mean, it was, it exists, it's there, it was created probably before the city was even incorporated. But under our current subdivision code, it may not be something that would be allowed without some sort of modification for additional egress or something. But as far as the process they're going through to create this lot, they're going through the proper processes. There's nothing illegal about their going through the process to create this.
Okay, I was just making sure. And once again, the codes I keep on hearing are these 14-2. If we're breaking something, I would have hoped the city would have told us that we're doing something wrong. But we went through all the proper channels. Like you said, all we're doing is trying to create revenue to finish all of our projects. We have increased every house on that golf course drastically with value. If you don't see what we've done, we've done a lot. And we're just going to go do more. And that's the whole thing, what we're trying to do. You know, we don't need to take it. We have taken zero money in three years. And that's part of what we wanted to do. You know, I looked at, you know, I was privileged to be a member there. The last five years I was not. The big corporations took it away. We've been called thieves, we've been called all these names now, and it's like, no, we're not doing that. We're doing something good. So, you know, we don't want to make enemies, you know? We're, we just don't. And like you said, when I have all the stuff and the orchids that we're, all this, and it's just frustrating. It's really frustrating because we're not trying to do something wrong. We're trying to do something right so we can create some stuff. And that's, and that's from my heart. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. My name is Jeff Gilbert, and I just want to address that when we purchased this property, it was a failing property. This property was on a downward spiral for the last 10 years. We purchased the property, the grass was brown, it wasn't maintained. And we came in, in the last three years, we've sunk a lot of money into maintaining this and bringing it back into a golf course. It wasn't a golf course. The clubhouse was open from, I think, 4:00 in the morning until 12:00 in the afternoon. We revamped that, we've done improvements. I moved, I was five years old when my parents moved on that golf course. I was a state champion at age 13. That golf course meant everything to me. My mom still lives on it to this day for 45 years. She's lived on that course. I own the properties on there. My concern is that course. It's part of our community. My colleague brought that golf course and voters to Havasu to enjoy it. And when the corporation bought it from them, it was down. They took every single penny out of that. Our budget for maintenance was 25,000. We've injected 500 a year just to maintain it. New irrigation, new pumps. So when people say that we've stole their views, when you look at that parcel right there and you see that it is all desert in the back, the green part, if you look, if you can go on the bottom part right there, that's the green. Up on top to the right is the tee box, like Dan said, it's 37 feet high. The green, or the green right there on hole three right there has nothing to do. The views from there, that sits up at least 20 feet tall. So when they say we're blocking views, there's no views to block. All those three houses face towards the lake down the fairway. So where we are right there is all unused property. It's not property that we're taking from anyone or blocking views. So when they say that, it's not. You've been out there, you saw the neighbors. It's just, like you said, that one corner is just a bunch of cactuses. I've been there for 50 years. We're just trying to clean it up. That's all we're trying to do is improve for our community, the golf course. If there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for the applicant?
I do have a question. I, like I said, I'm torn on this one. I'm a member of the golf course. I think you guys have put a lot of, a lot of money into it, and it has improved a lot. It was one of the corporations in town that basically took a lot of money from Lake Havasu and took it out of town. And we have local owners that have bought it and are reinvesting money in it. And you can see the improvements, and you can see, you can definitely see the improvement. So I definitely, I can vouch for these two man's characters. Like I said, I do want to put out there, I'm a member of the club. And I'm only a member of the club because I just started playing golf and you play other places. This is a, this is a good course that we're building back up into. And I, and like I said, I, to be honest, I was, I was on the no side when reading over it and looking over it because it does seem, okay, well, if you have forever view, it is a golf course. I guess my biggest concern is, you know, if, if, if it's going to be a play and stay condos or play and stay put there, and it's your land and you're legally allowed to do that, then, then I'm hesitant to say no to a house because to me, a house would improve the property values and be better. So I guess my question is, if you do get turned down today, what are your plans for that lot? Because to me, that is a, if we're harming the neighborhood by, and I say harming, but, you know, with Airbnbs and coming in and, you know, play and stay and new people in, I mean, that's a traffic issue. But if that's something that's completely out of our hands that we don't have any say in, you know, a house to me, million-dollar house across the street doesn't sound so bad. So I guess that's my question to you and maybe even to the resident. I mean, would you prefer a million-dollar house or, you know? So I guess my question is, what's your plans with it if we do turn it down today?
We definitely want to develop it for our best interests. We do want to raise the money to put back and inject back into the golf course. So we will eventually develop that area. It is an unused area, it is desert, and we definitely want to develop it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it, Joe.
And reading through some of those, yeah. Yeah, just state your name for the record.
My name, my name is Beck Bushnell, and I live at 2401 Lima Drive above the property. And I listened to what Mr. Essie said about the trees, but those were not all pine trees, and they weren't unhealthy. So, but even if they were, what happened to the grass? That's why it's a desert. And I'm also kind of concerned because we've had realtors showing that lot. You know, Mr. Lane talked about things being a done deal. That's what the real estate agent said to someone. Oh, no, that's not a valid lot. Oh, yeah, it's a done deal. So that, you know, that's, makes us nervous when, you know, people have been here a long time and have relationships, and I understand that. But I hope everybody looks at this fairly and not through friendship eyes and things like that. And just some of the things that have been said, a lot of people are afraid of retaliation because it, look, I'm shaking. It's been very bullying, you know, when people say things and it's off the cuff. Now, I was unaware that they'd been threatened with a lawsuit at that point. But the lady had been lied to and told that her little cactus garden and part of the other portion of the lot that they wanted to trade off was going to be for beautification. Nothing was mentioned at all about a home. And when she found out, she was angry, which I understand. And that's all I have a question is about. What happened to the grass? And I hope everybody got to see these if, so if it was just the trees and it was desert. It wasn't three years ago.
Thank you. So these glossy pictures that you provided, this is that dry area is the lot we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Winter 2017.
Can I ask a question? I.
Yeah, I drove the neighborhood, but I didn't see it from that perspective, so.
Yeah, I didn't get pictures.
Yeah, I don't know if the applicant would like to address that or.
I'm ready, Mr. Mayor, I've never seen.
Just get it to the microphone real quick if you can, just so people at home.
Here we go.
We have not changed any irrigation. Hole four, hole four is next. We've done six.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if you could just come to the microphone, there's folks at home that are.
Yes, so, sorry about that.
Yeah.
We have not changed anything on that hole of irrigation. The irrigation's 54 years old. We have done holes, let me just tell you the holes we've done. Holes one, holes two, holes three, holes six, holes nine, 18, 10 on the west of irrigation splits, okay? We have not touched hole five. It's a par three, right? We're going for the stuff that really needs attention. What I mean splits is, it would have 17 sprinkler heads on a, on one head, on one row. So when we split them out, we have not touched anything on that hole, period, in three years. We just finished up hole number nine. We just had to do our pump station. We've done nine, six, 13, and 16 on the east course. That's the splits that we have done. We have not touched that. So once again, irrigation is irrigation is irrigation. You know, we have not moved any irrigation on that hole.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And the only other question is, I don't see the dates on this for one, and two, this picture being stated here. That's an empty lot there where it's developed here, so. I don't see any dates to just to tell us when that was. But as you see on this picture here, it is all desert. The lot that we want to carve out is not even part of the, where the green is up on the top of here on this portion here, here's our tee box, here's the green. So it's not even in the play of golf.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, so this will be the last comment. Usually you get the five minutes one time, but we'll.
I just want to clarify, I, and you heard me, I did not say anything that was not said in the meeting. In other words, I didn't repeat anything that wasn't said in our initial surveying. That was my only communication with them. And in response to Mr. Dolan, you know, what they, I understand, but, you know, when I purchased the property, this is what I was told. I knew what the GC covered. It didn't cover a house, so it was just a surprise. And in reference to the desert, some people find beauty in the desert. And I just happen to be one of them. So, thank you.
Yeah, so is your house the one with like a red roof area?
My house is so small, it's very hard to see.
Right there, okay, so what is your view from the backyard?
My view from the backyard, I'm at a pie, so our view from the backyard is very small.
Limited, but golf course, lake view?
Right, right.
And then just to Councilmember Dolan's question, as far as, so the GC does allow for ancillary accessory uses such as stay and plays and those types of hotel even, which is shocking to learn.
Right, and that was, that was mentioned when we met. That was one of the things that was mentioned. I didn't say anything because I believe, as Mr. Lane said, that I thought that that was put into place for it to be in an area where their clubhouse was or any, I didn't want to speak to something I didn't know.
Yeah, so what would you prefer, since it's a use? What would be my, I mean, was that the question?
I did say to you, I said, "We would never want to do that to you, Vince." Exact words I said. "We would never want to do that to you."
Like, I'm being, I'm just with just best intentions here. He did say that to me. That's why I didn't address it because I thought that it was around the clubhouse and all that, that that was, and I wasn't going to speak to something that I didn't know.
Sure, yeah, no, I understand. And so Luke, is that, the stay and plays and the hotel could be used in the site if, because it's GC zoning?
Well, it's part of the zoning, if it's in conjunction, an accessory use to the golf course. And the golf course is a large piece of property, and it encompasses all the area of the golf course, I would say. And if it's an accessory use to the golf course, it's allowed. But there are setbacks that apply to structures on the golf course. So the building setbacks for the golf course zoning is 50 feet from all property, from all the golf course property line. So if something were to be built on this piece of property, a structure of some sort, it'd have to be 50 feet from the property line to the, to the new structure being built, if that helps.
Okay, yes, thank you. All right, any, yes, the public hearing's still open if you'd like to make a comment.
My name is Rick Reyes. I, my wife is Dr. Heidi Burdine, and we live at 2349 Hogan Lane, which is directly across or somewhat a little bit blinding us on this new proposed RE lot. We purchased the lot in 2012. And during the time, we, we got encouraged by a doctor who was living next to us that this lot is GC lot, and it will never change. So we purchased a lot from him and by his encouragement. And by, and we plan, starting doing all of those, planning to build the house. Now, three years after that, we fought another problem in the property areas where the, they want a house there on the other side of the road, but the same road, that they want to put a Safeway house. So we fought that for two years because we know that the increased density of that area is unsafe for the existing cul-de-sac. And even our friend down here is saying that now that increased density of the cul-de-sac will be a safety issue for the existing code that we have now. So that's our concern as well on this property. But anyway, after that, we, the, we, I didn't say we won, but the, the neighborhood was able to overcome that Safeway house, then we built the house. Now, after three years, now we another thing to fight again. So it's a real challenge for us now. Every three years, we have to fight something. And this is a GC code on this area. So please, help us because we are fighting other, every three years. So I don't know what's the next one that we will have. But this is really something that we don't anticipate. We purchased this property because it's GC. We do our diligence as well that this is a GC, and we don't have to do anything. And even Dr. Cunningham, who told me, hey, bought my lot because this is the best one, even though she charged me very much, but cost me dearly. So I believe him. And of And of course, I went to the city and asked them. And they said, "This is a G C, you don't have to worry. Nobody will build that there because the is zoned for that." And plus, he says, "You have the longest cul-de-sac in Lake Habsburg." Density in there is prohibited at that time that he told me. And when I heard from him today, that density at present condition is not allowed to increase density on that without any other access because it's only one way to get there. So please help us. And thank you very much for your attention.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gober, did, yes. Now we'll close the public hearing after your comment.
I just want to make one comment. We're surrounded by 650 homes on this golf course. It was all over the paper. People could have commented. We had three people comment out of 650 homes. All we're doing is improving this golf course and making it better. Like I said, we bought a failing business that was grass that was yellow, deteriorated. I mean, it was going down a coma. Everyone's gone down a coma. Anyone in this room goes down a coma. We ripped out the oleanders, we put in the tracks. I mean, everything that we've ever made off this property has been injected back into this golf course, which is our community was based on that course. If you look back at pictures and see when McCulloch started, the hotel, remota was a three-story remota, and it was a golf course in the airport. Holly Development would bring people up and show them the golf course and the whole surrounding area. That's how this town was based on. Like I said, I was raised there, since I was five years old, I only want the best, and we are doing the best. Again, tonight, we've only heard from three people out of 650-some homes that's surrounding. This room should have been full, but we've heard only three comments on one property that we're just trying to develop and make right. So on behalf of my partner and I, just want to let you know that, I mean, our, everything we've done is to better for our community. This is the golf course.
Yeah, thank you.
If we were to put a real drone there, would it be?
Yeah. There was never a real drone.
Yeah, I know.
We didn't clarify that, but that.
All right, I'm gonna, thank you, I'm gonna close. You had twice too, so, yeah. Microphone, yeah. Would you turn the microphone? And then the public hearing will be closed after this comment.
Legally, I believe you only have to let the people within 300 feet know. So the, I mean, I'm kind of done with this issue, but the thing is, the other 650 people may not know.
Sure.
You know? So that's all I'm saying, is the 300 people were the ones that were, and whatever happens, happens.
Yes.
Change your hands.
Yeah, thank you. All right, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you for the comments. I'll bring it back to council for discussion or questions. I will reiterate what Councilmember Dolan said, is that some of the accusations that were in these comments that were written or received throughout this whole process are exactly what was done to the corporations that previously owned it, and these two gentlemen purchased it to invest into it. So it's, they're the ones that are fixing that area, but that's more from a global perspective.
And I can only, and I can only clarify, I landed there with a hot air balloon about four years ago, so I can assure you that it was dirt and there were no trees about, about four years ago because I look at that other picture and I get a panic attack thinking about trying to land there. But, so like I said, I just, not knowing the exact date of this picture, like I said, I landed there about three, four years ago, and it was dirt, and there was cactus, and I just cleared the cactus, and I packed up in dirt, and it was messy. So I remember that day vividly, so that's my only concern about the picture and the grass and the accusations that they would have turned off the water to it, so.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you. There's no denying what these gentlemen have done with the golf course is outstanding. They've taken something that was not good and turned it into something that is good. But that's beside the point here tonight. We're talking about taking a piece of property on a residential street and carving it out of the golf course and turning it into a residential property. All the other stuff, I don't want to say it doesn't matter, but that's not what we're actually here to talk about. We're here to talk about just this one small piece of that golf course. And I applaud you for the great work that you've done out of the golf course, but this is a totally different, different issue. And if there's no other comments, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to deny ordinance number 20-1240 rezoning a portion of APN 10901067 abutting Hogan Lane as shown on the attached lot map from G C to RE to create a new residential lot from an unused portion of the golf course property.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion?
Can I make one comment?
Yes, Councilmember Koch?
As you saw earlier, and I made the comment earlier, it makes a huge difference when we have things that come to the council and there's obviously a lot of emotion tied to it. The one thing I will say is when all you get is negative and there's no positive, there's nobody contacting you that's for the project, it's so important to make sure that there's people out there that are behind your project, that they talk to us and let us know. Because if all we hear is the negative, that's all we have to go on. So I would just make that comment, that whenever these types of issues come up, it always is good that if you have people who are supporting your project, let them come talk to us or contact us. That's very important. The other thing I will say, and I've said this for years, don't ever tell me that you believe that when you bought a piece of property, you forever have all the rights and views because we all know that's not true. We all that own property know that that's never a guarantee. We're here because of planning and zoning changes all the time. There's, everything changes, and so never buy a piece of property thinking you have a forever view or you're forever going to be given the right to have what you have because it's just, it's not accurate. So I just make that comment.
Thank you. Any final comments?
Just have a vote clarification. When we're voting to deny, what's the difference between a yes vote and a no vote? I know that's sometimes been confusing in the past, so I just wanted to make sure we know what we're voting yes for.
Yeah, Ms. Williams, do you want to clarify that? I don't.
A yes vote would be to deny the ordinance. You're voting to deny the ordinance. A no vote would be that you're not moving to deny the ordinance. Hope that, is that clear?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
A yes vote would be that you are in favor of denying the action, and a no vote would be that you're not in favor of denying the action.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, we are ready to vote. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Michelle Lynn.
Mr. Mayor, I'll vote nay.
Thank you.
Motion fails three to four.
Thank you. We now move backwards to item 8.5, which is adopt ordinance number 2012. Do we need some clarification? So the motion to deny failed. Yeah. Mr. Mayor? Yes. There's also the ability for a council to make a follow-up motion if wanted. Yeah, thank you.
But does a no, sorry, Mr. Mayor, does a no vote automatically imply a yes vote in that situation? Or is it just, we just denied a no motion, so we're back at zero, I guess, is the question?
Yeah. I think Kelly unmuted her Zoom, so I'll let her address that. Kelly Gary's on Zoom?
Yes.
All right, sorry, we just had to switch our screens.
If it's council's desire to approve it, let's do a motion to approve that ordinance because if there were any other conditions or anything else you wanted to add on there, you'd want to make sure that that was included. So if that is the desire of the council, a second motion would be recommended.
Thank you. What is the desire of council?
So Kelly, if we're making a motion to approve it, we just change the suggestion motion from deny to approve, and we can read it that way?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to approve ordinance number 20-1240 rezoning a portion of APN 109-01-067 abutting Hogan Lane as shown on the attached lot map from G C to RE to create a new residential lot from the unused portion of the golf course.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Grow?
Sorry, that was corrected. Yep. Nope, it, yep, it was originally the deny, just got changed to the approve.
All right, all right, with no other comments or questions, we are ready to vote.
Mr. Mayor, aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to item 8.5, which is adopt ordinance number 20-1241 for a planned development rezon of track 2345, block one, lot one, from C, C, I'm sorry, it's late. Let's start that over. We're going back to 8.5, adopt ordinance number 20-1238 rezoning the portions of 2301 Hogan Lane, tract 135F, block two, lot 1B, 504 Haggen Way, tract 134, block six, lot 5A, 514 Haggen Way, tract 134, block six, lot 6A, 1985 Palmer Drive, tract 135C, block three, lot 2A, and 1995 Palmer Drive, tract 135C, block three, lot 3A, purchased from the golf course, from G C Golf Course District to RE Residential District, Residential Estates District. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you. As you, as you read, these are five different properties adjacent to the golf course. The property owners purchased portions of the golf course and added them to their residential property. So in this case, in these five cases, there is the main property, the lot is zoned residential estates. The area that was purchased from the golf course is currently zoned golf course. So in these five cases, they're simply asking that the golf course portion of the property they purchased be rezoned to match the RE, their residential estates zoning that the home is on. So there are five of these. They're scattered throughout the prop, throughout the golf course. There's a couple here on Palmer Drive. There was the one on Hogan Lane, and then two more on Haggen Way next to each other. The property, actually, 524 Haggen Way went through this process about a year ago, and it rezoned from the golf course portion to the RE. Coincidentally, these other two adjacent, what, two of the adjacent property owners are going through this, asking for the same process right now. The, as I explained earlier, the 2016 development code created the golf course zoning district and applied it to the area of the golf course. And that's why the golf course is currently zoned golf course instead of RE. It was previously zoned RE, but the council elected to have it rezoned to golf course for the, so the golf course would remain a golf course, reduced. It would make it more difficult to redevelop the golf course in something other than a golf course. So these lots with the additional area, of course, they'll meet the development standards for the RE properties. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero in favor of them. And the representative from the golf courses here, if they have additional questions of them. That concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we've done similar action to this in the past, so are there any questions of council of the applicant or?
Nothing.
All right, perfect. Yeah, unless you had anything you wanted to add.
Nope, this is just, this is just a house cleaning.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, this is coming forward from the people purchasing the property. So this was recommended or comes before City Council this evening with a seven to zero vote in favor from our Planning and Zoning Commission. With no initial comments from council, open the public hearing? The public hearing is now open, but anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none in person, we also have not received any in, by email at cityclerk@hcaz.gov on this particular item. So seeing no one in person wanting to address us, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back to council for any comments, questions, discussions, or motion? Seeing no comments or questions, maybe I'll entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion?
Okay.
As soon as my screen reloads. This is a big one, though. I move to adopt ordinance number 20-1238 rezoning the portions of 2301 Hogan Lane, tract 135F, block two, lot 1B, 504 Haggen Way, tract 134, block six, lot 5A, 514 Haggen Way, tract 134, block six, lot 6A, 1985 Palmer Drive, tract 135C, block three, lot 2A, and 1995 Palmer Drive, tract 135C, block three, lot 3A, that were purchased from the golf course as shown on the attached parcel plat maps from G C to RE.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Mayor, aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, I'm sorry to do this, it's late. So the motion previously for the lot to be built, I voted yea, yes. And when I looked at the names up there, I think it was rat. I just wanted to see if Kelly has a way of checking that to make sure I was down for yes, I was okay with it.
Yeah, you support the zoning change to allow a lot?
Yes, to allow the lot to be changed.
I believe that's what I recall, but Ms. Williams is checking that now.
I'm not sure if I saw it right, because it is late, but I thought I should correct it now.
And now it's for 8.5, is that correct?
That would have been item 8.7. 8.7, Councilmember Quay wants to.
For 8.7, I have Councilmember Quay, aye.
Yes, we do have you as a aye.
I guess it's just late, my eyes aren't seeing correctly.
Yes. All right, so we will move on to item 8.6, which is adopt ordinance number 20-1239 rezoning a portion of APN 1051-14-045 abutting Granada Veretta from Golf Course District to Residential Estates District to create a new residential lot from an unused portion of the golf course property. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you. This is similar to the Hogan Lane Lot Creation Property. It's on Granada Venada Veretta cul-de-sac off of Via Naranja and Paseo Granada. Here's a large version of the request. The proposed lots about almost 19,000 square feet. It's a little larger than the existing lots in the area. It meets all the development standard requirements for an RE zoned property. As mentioned, the property is currently zoned. Well, here's the, excuse me, here's the track map of the area. The Paseo Granada cul-de-sac turns into Granada Veretta. Actually, that becomes the cul-de-sac. Those street right-of-ways are 60 feet wide. The pavement in this area is about 24 feet. And then this proposed lots on the end of, sticks on the end of Granada Veretta cul-de-sac. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item and recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero in favor. And the applicant is here, if you have other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for the applicant? Do any members of the council have any questions for the applicant? Any initial comments or questions before we open the public hearing? All right, we'll open up the public hearing. This is a, a public hearing, would anyone like to address the City Council on this We did receive one public comment on this item that was written, so Ms. Williams, if you could please read that into the record for us.
This comment was received on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty with the subject line of Granada Veretta zoning request comments. To the members of the Lake Havasu City Council, our family has been homeowners in the golf course area since the early nineteen eighties. Obviously, we have seen many changes and much development in the area since then. We are writing to you to voice our strenuous objection to the proposed zoning change, which will possibly benefit the three owners of the golf course and negatively impact everyone else in the area. We do not think it is an act, any accident that the owners picked this particular time to approach the controversial subject of rezoning. Most residents are struggling with acclimating to the new normal, shutdowns, quarantines, and curfews have all been a part of our lives in recent months. Many part-time residents have not returned for the winter or have opted to stay away due to Havasu's COVID nineteen numbers. It seems clear that this move was calculated to take advantage of residents' preoccupation with other issues. Suddenly, the owners are asking for three separate rezoning requests with no end in sight. In the past, the golf course owners have been less than forthcoming when questioned about future plans. In September of two thousand seventeen, members received a summons to a meeting about plans for these lots, but when questioned by their plans, but when questioned by phone, they were evasive and refused to issue any clear statement about their exact plans. It seems like they shelved their plans until they felt they could have them approved with the least opposition. Those we have spoken to have not remained silent because they are in favor of the change, but rather because they feel that their efforts would be wasted, since P and Z already seemed poised to approve this. Our concerns are much the same as those of homeowners on Hogan Lane, yet the city seems set to sacrifice our neighborhood to appease the owners after appearing set to deny the Hogan Lane request. While the lots at issue are on a cul-de-sac, it is a very small cul-de-sac, and the land available is insufficient to support adequate street parking or turnaround traffic. Sound travels extensively around the open golf course area, and every new home in that area affects the noise level and quiet enjoyment of existing homeowners, especially due to the current scourge of short-term rentals. The current height of homes in the area means that additional homes in that area will affect the views and therefore property values of homes on the fourteenth T area. In addition, most of the lots in that area have existing homes, exactly how the golf course guarantee access for their own larger maintenance vehicles, tree trimmers, construction vehicles, et cetera, and emergency first responders. In our time here, we have seen the police department called to the golf course more than once to question, apprehend people on the golf course or for vandalism. We've also seen a hot air balloon land on the thirteenth fairway, and their chase vehicle used those exact empty lots to safely remove the balloon. Our neighbors set fire to a golf course palm tree using illegal fireworks requiring the fire department. If an ambulance EMTs haven't been called to the area yet, it is just a matter of time. It would be much easier for them to have a consistent address to access these areas rather than guessing which empty privately owned lots might be available, if there are any empty lots to access. This move on the part of the golf course owner seems to be part of a troubling trend, much like a farmer or rancher who owns a large tract of land and who sells a few acres every time his crops come up short. These owners are going to find themselves with the main house and not, not much else if they are not stopped. Exactly where does this, a little piece here, a little piece there, approach stop? As anyone who has ever trimmed their own hair can tell you, this method, methodology will end in disaster every time. Their cash flow should not be guaranteed at the expense of homeowners whose homes, for the most part, predate their purchase of the golf course. The golf course area is one of the nicest areas in central Lake Havasu. More and more of the luxury homes in this area are being built on the outskirts or entirely outside city limits. This sort of encroachment and uncertainty is one reason why golf course owner, homeowners need to know that the city will not be helping to constantly change the rules, I'm sorry, or pull the rug out from under them. Who would purchase a home under such conditions? Please help the homeowners in this area maintain the value of the homes and assure the future of appropriate residential development in the area by sending a message to property owners that the city will not ruin tomorrow for a small gain for one group of owners today. Thank you for your consideration submitted by Lorraine and Stacy Lewis.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this matter?
I really want you guys, Mr. Mayor, council, we have to have a thirty-six hole golf course, okay? The stuff that we've cut out, and when he said that we did this during COVID, Mr. Johnson over here, he's done over thirty lands, the little slivers. Nothing is, we've, we've told at least twenty-five people no, because it will change the complexity of the golf course. It has to be unisonant and not a house coming like this, correct? We've told multiple people no. Not just, sure, would we like to have the money to reinject? Yes, but it would screw up our golf course. I'm a, I've been a golfer for forty years, I know what a golf course needs to look like. In this case, once again, it's dead area for us. We cannot, and once again, we have to go through the Mojave County for them to, we have what's called a ten-year back tax, so anything we, if we were to change the golf course, take a hole out here, we would have to pay ten years of back tax on that. Don't know if you guys know that. So the little slivers with all the, the two irrigation pump stations that we've built for over two hundred and fifty thousand, we've had a lot on our plate, and this guy right here is only one guy, and once again, he can attest that, we just didn't throw this out there. We've had a lot on our plates, so, and once again, we can't change the golf course. We know that, and we won't change the golf course, so, but once again, if it's not affecting our playable, playability, that's the stuff that we're looking for, and once again, I want to make sure you guys are very clear, we have told multiple people no. So with that being said, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Councilmember Lynn, your microphones aren't working.
I just have a question, the lot right in front of it that you can see on the screen that's, no, go back, the, the one right in front of it that's empty, does somebody, can you tell me the history of that?
I believe, council member, I believe the house, Lee, I think the house in the, the White House across owns that.
Okay.
Lot one, right next to it, and then the one across the cul-de-sac, lot nine is owned by the same implement.
Did he have any issues?
He sent a letter to the P and Z, and that should have been in your packet that you have.
Is this Roy?
I can actually, I went out there and walked this neighborhood as well, and both of those lots are empty. There's, there's nobody on those lots.
But I'm pretty sure, doesn't he, I thought he was over here, Lee.
No, he, he owns that one and then one above the street, and he lives in.
Our access points, real quick, our access points, when, when we go out there and cut the greens, they start on hole one and they work through the cart path, they don't cut streets, they go boom, right along the course, so.
And if there was, go ahead. If there was need for medical or emergency or fire trucks, again, do you have my exhibit, the survey exhibit map on your, no, okay. Between the newly created lot and the lot on the other side of the cul-de-sac, there's still probably about a thirty-foot gap in there that will be direct access from the golf course to the cul-de-sac. See, so the, the lots don't touch, there's still a gap in between there that is direct access.
I believe you're alluding to this space right here.
Yes, Luke, yes.
So here's the proposed lot, here's lot nine across on the other side of the cul-de-sac, and this little portion of the cul-de-sac abuts the golf course property right there.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions while we're up here?
Yeah, does anyone else have any questions? Any members of the council? No? No, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, mayor, thank you, council. All right, any comments or thoughts, or entertain a motion? Again, this item is coming now.
If I can, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, please. Yeah, the, this comment, or excuse me, this action's coming before us with a seven to zero vote in favor of the action this evening. Councilmember Gro.
Thank you. This one makes more sense, doesn't seem to be ruining anybody's life. I understand the need to, why this is happening, I want to say how disappointed I am in what happened to the poor people on Hogan Lane tonight. This one makes more sense.
All right, any other comments? Entertain a motion? Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance number two zero dash one two three nine rezoning a portion of APN one zero five dash one four dash zero four five, abutting Granada Vernada as shown on the attached lot map from GC to RE to create a new residential lot from an unused portion of the golf course property.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Any further discussion? We're ready to vote. Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. All right, moving on to, now we're going back and getting on track, so eight point eight, adopt resolution number two zero dash three four three seven authorizing the dedication of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Lake Havasu City general fund savings resulting from the application of AZ CARES funding to public safety, to public safety costs to the LHC Resource Alliance through the River Cities United Way to support local businesses affected by COVID nineteen pandemic. Mr. Knutson.
Mayor and council, it's getting late, but I think it's important to highlight the importance of this and the, the next item on the agenda in terms of the city's response to the negative impacts that have been occurring to some of our local businesses with regards to the COVID in the last few months. So we've identified through the governor's office some executive orders and directives that have taken place that have caused some of our businesses in Lake Havasu City, and of course, across the state, frankly, across the planet, to, to close, otherwise or lessen their, their capacity. So the, the thought here is utilize some of the savings that the city's realized through the Arizona CARES funding that was a, that was identified for Lake Havasu City, and utilize those dollars to, to the Resource Alliance, who is led by Vice Mayor Dave Lane, excuse me, and is led by the efforts of the Chamber of Commerce, the Community Health Foundation, the Better Business Bureau, and of course, the United Way, who acts as that fiduciary. So the thought again here is to utilize those funds to the Resource Alliance, which would then be used and administered by, through the Resource Alliance and the United Way to, to businesses that would need to pay for rent or some of the, the simple overhead costs that, that continue, even though their, their doors are shuttered or capacity is limited.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Knutson. This item is important to, to myself as well. We have several businesses that are closed under the governor's executive order, and small business is the backbone of our community, and there has been some sources of opportunity. The, the Resource Alliance has done some fantastic things already for some of our small businesses, but some of the, the larger things like the PPP and some of the federal programs have, are, are no longer, and in these extended closures, really need to, we need to address to make sure that these businesses are going to be available to support our citizens and, and their efforts when they are able to reopen, so. Any members of the council have any questions or thoughts? Vice Mayor Lane?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I thought I'd offer some clarification as, as we move along. The mayor came to me here a couple weeks ago and asked if the LHC Resource Alliance would be able to handle helping these businesses. Right now, we, we have raised a lot of funds and we have helped a lot of people, but quite frankly, there are some businesses that have said, thank you, we appreciate everything that you're doing for the community, but the amount of dollars that it takes for us, you just don't have that kind of money, and because we have a, a limit, you know, through the LHC Resource Alliance right now, we're, we're limiting people that we're helping to a thousand dollars. Well, for some of these other businesses, that doesn't even cover a month's worth of rent. So we sat down the four directors and CEOs of the companies that Mr. Knutson mentioned, and said, can we do this? And we want to make sure that we, we're using money wisely, so through the LHC Resource Alliance, what's been happening as we went along is the applications that are submitted have been vetted by the board of the River Cities United Way. Under this program, those businesses instead would be vetted by those of us that are actually the CEOs and then myself, vetting them and not giving money directly to the companies, but actually paying their bills for them to try to help them keep their doors open. These are tax dollars that have come to us, if we did not give them to the Resource Alliance, then they would be used here in the city. So it's very, very important that we have good accountability for these dollars, and so one of the things we discussed is when we say two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we don't want the city to write a check for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and give it to the United Way, and then we get five thousand dollars worth of application, applicants from businesses that say they need the help. So what we're saying is, the city keep all the money until we actually have some applicants, and I will tell you, the newspaper did an article on this particular issue when they saw it on the agenda, and I have received a phone call from one of our local business owners already, saying that he read the article, and I was on my way here, I could not talk to him, but, so we do have businesses that are already reaching out. As the money is needed, then the city would, would forward it over to River Cities United Way as the mechanism and the, the clearinghouse and the, the record keepers, so that they're, for audit purposes, will make sure that we're able to account for every single dollar, because it's, like I said, these are tax dollars, and we have to ensure that every dollar is accounted for, and that we could have any audit, and pass any audit. So, and, and in full disclosure, part of the, the funds would go, a percentage would go to River Cities United Way for those clerical funds, for their administrative costs, because it does cost money for them to be able to do that, so we want to ensure that, that's out in the public as well. So that's all I have, if anybody has any questions on, on the way we plan on doing this, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
Yeah, a couple of clarifications, yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Alain, for doing that, that, that would not exceed eight percent as far as the administrative cost of those dollars, that's in the resolution that's before us this evening, and also, the, this would be a grant to River Cities United Way with the caveat that it's through the LHC Resource Alliance, which we stood up early on in the pandemic to, to help address this, so this is one of the easiest and quickest ways. We have gyms and fitness centers and bars that are going on, movie theaters that have still never reopened, but they're going on their third month, we need to get them, if, if necessary, rent payments for September first. I mean, these, these folks are, are at the end of, of where they can be, and this is one small way that we can help support their efforts. So, Councilmember Dolan, did you have a comment or a question?
Just, just a question of how they've, so is it the, the alliance that determines the criteria and who calls, they're the one that makes the call, and I guess my next question is, is United Way the only way we can go about this? Is, I mean, could we go about through another nonprofit where we wouldn't have to pay the eight percent fees, like through a Rotary Club or one of those, you know, the Health Foundation or something like that, where the dispensing costs would be a little bit less expensive?
The Health Foundation, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
The, the Health Foundation has those administrative costs as well, because they're the ones that are used to sending out those dollars. They have the mechanisms in place, so we're not reinventing the wheel. All the nonprofits like that have administrative All the nonprofits like that have administrative costs associated with them because they do have employees. So is there another mechanism in place where we could do that? That's totally up to you. You know, yeah, I guess you could say that the city itself could write the checks. I mean, that's...
Yeah, we can't do that. Maybe, Mr. Knutson, you could clarify that.
The easiest way, I think, and the most transparent way to do it is to use one of our local nonprofits where the, it's already established. And the businesses would have to fill out an application. Well, actually, what we've discussed is we will interview the owners of that company, and then we will pay their bills. We're not actually going to give money to companies. We'll pay their bills for them.
Okay, yeah, I guess my question is, how much work does the alliance, the volunteers in the alliance do versus what United Way would do? Is it just them writing the check and it's the alliance that's going through the process and approving and doing all the work?
The CEOs, well, there'll be myself, Debbie Pennington from River Cities United Way and her time, Linda Seaver from the Havasu Community Health Foundation and her time. And then the Better Business Bureau, Christina Hook. Her money is, and her salary is actually paid for by members. And Lisa Kruger at the, like Havasu City Area Chamber of Commerce. Her salary is paid through membership dues. It's, so we have two of them that are paid through membership dues, two of them who are paid through percentages that are donated, those dollars that are donated. And then, of course, my salary is paid for by the taxpayers. And so there's no cost for mine, but, yeah.
Yeah, as far as the administration of it, this is the quickest and easiest way. United Way is set up to deal with grant fundings. This would be a grant that the city is offering, River Cities United Way. We're using the structure of the LHC Resource Alliance, but because the alliance isn't set up formally as an organization, it was a group of volunteers that we brought together in collaboration to address the needs of our community from a public health standpoint, health and safety and wellness, and then also business support, when we did that in early March. So it's just been a group of organizations in collaboration. So this is actually the legal mechanism that they're used to dealing with grants and grant funding. They know how to be held accountable to it, and then they would administer all of the paperwork processing and follow through for reporting.
And keep all the records.
Yes. Any other comments, questions, or thoughts? Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. And David, it's not that I don't trust you, but are you going to recuse yourself from this vote?
Yes, I will recuse myself from this vote since I am the head of the LHC Resource Alliance.
Thank you.
If we could, Ms. Gary, if you can just give, I mean, Vice Mayor Lane, that's his choice, but just so that for clarity, for those watching, that that is just a legal opinion on that.
Yeah, by, under law, there's no conflict of interest. He doesn't have a monetary or proprietary interest in the outcome of the vote, so he's not required by law to refrain and declare a conflict of interest. However, we do allow councilmembers to refrain if they believe there is a perceived conflict of interest. So in this case, then, there is a perceived conflict of interest, and it is time for him to recuse himself from this vote.
Thank you.
If I may, I would feel more comfortable recusing myself from this.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? We did not receive any written comments on this item, and it doesn't look like anyone in person would like to address the city council on this matter, so we'll go ahead and close this public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt resolution number two zero dash three four three seven, authorizing the dedication of $250,000 of general fund savings resulting from the application of Arizona Cares funding to public safety costs to the LHC Resource Alliance through the River Cities United Way to support local businesses affected by the COVID-19 pandemic.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Thank you. Councilmember McCoy?
Motion carries with six votes yes and one council member of recusal.
Thank you, and thank you to the council for your support. Our businesses definitely need it. All right, moving on to the next item, which is item eight point nine, adopt resolution number two zero dash three four three eight, suspending park rental fees until December 31st, 2020. Mr. Knutson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is another concept that you brought forth, Mr. Mayor, in response to the COVID and the impacts of COVID on our local businesses. This in particular would address the closure of gyms, fitness clubs, and similar businesses in Lake Havasu City. Under order of the governor right now that those establishments, those businesses in Lake Havasu City are to remain closed until we receive more, better stats in terms of positivity rates and other community spread criteria that's been identified by Governor Doug Ducey. Concept here is that we'd open up our parks for fitness classes and different exercise activities that would be wholly arranged and organized by the fitness clubs and by the gyms. And this resolution before you would forego the fees that would be required, normally required for commercial activity within the parks. There is an application process. It's a one-page application process. There is a requirement for a business license in Lake Havasu City as well as the proper insurance that's required. Both of those documents are easily available for any businesses that's operating right now in Lake Havasu City. And if you wish, Mr. Mayor, Mike Keen, our Parks and Recreation Director, is on Zoom, and it was at the Parks and Recreation Board meeting last night, and they did provide a recommendation. He'd be happy to quickly summarize that conversation if needed.
Yeah, please. Yeah, good evening, Mr. Keen, or good night, I guess. Almost good morning, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item was brought up Monday evening. I don't know if that was last night or before. But the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board did unanimously recommend to council to suspend these fees until December 31st. There was three main talking points. One was, how would this impact other user groups who would like to use the park for a gathering? To be sure that we're limiting the number of participants per area to allow for social distancing, and the concern that we might need to extend this past December 31st, depending on how the COVID-19 pandemic continues into the future. So those are the three main talking points of the evening. We talked through them right now, as far as how it would affect other user groups. We're not accepting reservations in the park right now. It's a first-come, first-served basis for any other user group. So really, we're not charging anyone to use the park, so it wouldn't really affect them in any way. Certainly, we're going to be looking at, you know, the number of participants per class or per workout area. And as far as extending it past December 31st, that'll just be a wait-and-see and come back to council on that measure. That kind of wraps up hopefully quickly enough the summary of Monday night.
Yes, yeah, thank you. And then, Councilmember Lynn, do you want to, you were at the meeting and you're our liaison, so if you could give a...
Yes, the board seemed very favorable to this. They just wanted to make sure that it's very clear that this commercial business is regarded as fitness and exercise only, so we don't want to open up a Pandora's box and there's other commercial activity being done down there. And they also wanted to point out that we had a discussion that these gyms and fitness centers, they're going to charge fees for their...
Services?
Services. So that money is going to generate back into the city. So there is money being made. It's going to help them out and it's going to help the city out. So for all of us, it's a good thing.
Yeah, thank you. And one of, in addition to helping these businesses that are in this industry that's currently closed by executive order, is the health and wellness of our citizens is so important, and so many people have no, no access to fitness and rely on their gym memberships or fitness memberships for sense of community, well-being, health. And so I think this is another small token that we can do to help support our citizens that rely on health and fitness, and then also those businesses that provide those services. Any other comments or questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to address the city council on this matter? And we see none in the audience, and we did not receive any written comment at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for conversation or motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt resolution number two zero dash three four three eight, suspending park rental fees until December 31st, 2020.
Second?
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Any further discussion? And thank you to Councilmember Lynn and the Parks and Rec Board for having that discussion yesterday. That's important that we get as much feedback. I believe we are ready to vote.
Mr. Mayor? Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight point one zero. Really, this meeting will end eventually tonight. We are getting to the end. Eight point one zero, ratify the statement of work with Camtra Technologies LLC for Oracle Cloud Human Capital Management Time and Labor Payroll and Enterprise Resource Planning Support Related to Grades and Grade Rate Structure Changes. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as indicated from, in what you read, that is requesting that council ratify the statement of work with Camtra Technologies. It is estimated that it would be a cost of up to $17,280. And this work is specific to implementing the new pay grades and pay structure associated with position analysis. And so in the interest of time, so that we can implement as soon as possible, we did proceed with the work. And so now we are requesting that council ratify this agreement.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. And members of the council, Ms. Olson mentioned this during our last council meeting, that this would be coming forward based on another item that we approved at that meeting. Is there any initial comments or questions from Ms. Olson? From members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? We did not receive any public comment via email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov for this item, and it doesn't appear that any in-person folks would like to make a comment, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to ratify the statement of work with Camtra Technologies LLC in an amount not to exceed $17,280.
Second?
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Koch. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember McCoy.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point one one is approve cooperative purchase for tires, tubes, services, and aftermarket automotive parts from Redburn Tire Company, Great West Tire, and Jack's Auto Parts from State Contracts. Mr. Frosley?
I reminded myself not to do that about three hours. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the introduction. I appreciate it. Good evening to you and members of the council. This item is our annual contract for the purchase of all those items that you just mentioned. And this one action, approval of this one action will get us included in three separate state procurement contracts. One with Redburn Tire Company for Bridgestone and Firestone tires, one with Great West Tire for Goodyear tires, and one with Carquest Jack's Auto for aftermarket auto parts and things like that. So what we're doing tonight is asking for approval of this item, which will allow the department to spend or exceed expenditures of $50,000 over the course of this fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Frosley? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? We did not receive any comments, written comments via email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov on this item. And it doesn't appear that we have anyone in person that wants to address the city council on this matter, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor? Motion?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to approve the cooperative purchase of tires, tubes, services, and auto parts exceeding $50,000 in annual expenditures for the term of the cooperative agreements from Redburn Tire Company, Great West Tire, and Carquest Jack's Auto Parts, utilizing Arizona State Procurement Office contracts, ID number CTR 042117, ID number CTR 042263, and ID number CTR 040435-1, and authorize the city staff to renew for three additional 12-month terms through March 31st, 2024.
Second?
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember McCoy.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight point twelve is approve sole source purchases of various Pierce fire apparatus parts and accessories through Hughes Fire Equipment, Inc., exceeding $50,000 for fiscal year 2020-21. Mr. Frosley?
Thank you again, Mayor. Mayor and council, Hughes Fire Equipment is the authorized regional distributor for, and the dealer for Pierce fire apparatus. In 2014, the city purchased five Pierce fire trucks. Last fiscal year, they rolled out of the manufacturer's warranty. And this story may sound familiar to you. I was actually here in May with this exact same story because we were coming within a couple hundred dollars of that $50,000 threshold last year. We didn't go over $50,000. But we're here again, getting our annual contract in place to exceed the $50,000 threshold with, for the Pierce apparatus with Hughes Fire Equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of council have any questions for Mr. Frosley? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? We also did not receive any comments on this item from written comments at email, by email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov. And it doesn't appear anyone in person wants to address the council on this matter, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve the sole source purchases of various replacement parts and accessories for Pierce fire apparatus vehicles and equipment exceeding $50,000 for fiscal year 2020-2021 from Hughes Fire Equipment Incorporated.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Mr. Mayor? Aye.
Thank you, Councilmember McCoy.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frosley. Moving on to item nine is our current events. Are there any council committee reports? No one would even dare.
I have a 30-minute update from the Airport Advisory Board. I'd like to let you, I'd like to read the minutes out loud. We had an Airport Advisory Board meeting, and it was very successful, so...
Yeah, it was actually your work session.
Work session, yes. It was, we welcomed the new members, and we had some discussion, and I think it was definitely, definitely a good start to it, so...
Yeah, fantastic. Yeah, this was the first meeting that all of the newly appointed members attended, so fantastic. Any other council committee reports? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item 10, future meetings. We'll have our next meeting, as was announced earlier, this coming Thursday, August 27th, at 6:00 p.m. That will be a special meeting, excuse me, a work session. That'll be a work session this Thursday, August 27th, 6:00 p.m. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m., followed by a meeting on Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. for a regular meeting. Item 11, future discussion items. Do any members of the council have any future discussion items? Seeing none, item 12, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, second from Councilmember Dolan to adjourn. Thank you, everybody, be kind. Thank you, everybody, be kind.